Hi, I'm Dr. Renee Turchi, Plymouth White Marsh High School distinguished graduate and pediatrician at St. Christopher's Hospital for Children, and you're watching CITV.
One, welcome to July's Colonial District's, July's District's Board Meeting. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our world.
I'd like to announce we met in executive session. I'd like to announce that the Board met in executive session tonight prior to this meeting. We discussed this evening's personnel actions. The meeting lasted about an hour. Okay, moving on, we're going to go into approval of the minutes. We could, and legal matters were also discussed. All right. Moving forward, approval of the minutes. We have first FMT Committee meetings from 6:11:18.
I ask that we table?
Yeah, you have a motion that we table the minutes of the meeting?
Yes.
Is there a second for that?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Why are we tabling?
We haven't had the other-
We saw it on the email, but I didn't understand.
We've asked for some revisions, and those have not been incorporated.
Can we talk about the revisions here? Because I wasn't sure what the revisions were.
Sure.
Isn't that why we discuss them?
Yes, right, right.
So the revisions would be that having listened to the two and a half hour recording of the minute, of the meeting, and reviewing the minutes, if we are going to have that extensive amount of detail that is in the minutes, it should be fully representative of everyone who spoke in the meeting and everything that happened in the minutes as of, they are, do not do that.
Got it.
All right. So I have a motion and a second for the tabling of the FMT Committee meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nays, ayes have it. The Board Business Meeting, make a motion to accept the minutes of the Board Business Meeting from 6:21:18. Do I have a second? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, ayes have it. Financial reports. So we have approval of financial reports for 2018, June 2018. We have the Capital Reserve Fund, food service profit and loss, outstanding investment report, comparison of taxes collected, trust fund report, budgetary deficit status report, budget transfers report, food service profit and loss, food service invoice, cash flow summary, real estate tax assessment report, reconciliation of cash accounts and bond report. Make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Reports have been accepted. Treasurer's Report. Make a motion to accept the June 2018 Treasurer's Report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it. Public comments on the agenda. There's opportunity to talk about anything on the, on the agenda tonight. Is there any?
Lynda Dahl, White Marsh resident, commenting on the agenda item under new business, the first reading regarding RCOs. Before I state my concern, I believe that it's important that I state my credentials. I have been a White Marsh Township resident for over 30 years. I am the parent of two kindergarten through 12th grade Colonial School District students. I have volunteered in Colonial School District for 20 years through PTO activities when my children attended their various schools, and afterwards by volunteering tutoring at White Marsh Elementary School, Conshohocken Elementary School, and Colonial Elementary School, which I continue to do and enjoy immensely. Until this year, as longtime school board members and school administrators can attest to, I have been the only member of the public who attended committee meetings, and I have rarely attended school board meetings. This was because I and the public trusted the school board members were working for the good of the students, that all the school board members respected one another, that they were transparent in their actions, and that they cared about the taxpayers and our students. This trust is currently lacking, and everything you do has to be watched, thus the big crowds. So if you think the attendance is a positive sign, you are mistaken. People are here because you don't listen to your constituents, and you proceed with your own agenda in mind. Having said that, my current concern is with the politically motivated push for the discriminatory practice of allowing only RCO groups to bid on contracts. This policy will add costs to Colonial School District, which will potentially limit our ability as a district to afford to continue to be cutting edge in our offerings of the latest and greatest technology, new and innovative pilot programs, and professional development for our staff. We have a reputation as a district of being on the forefront of education. The approval of an RCO policy will result in the increased cost of projects, the increase of our debt service, and the increase of our taxes, a lot of increases. The decreases will be the funding that our students deserve toward their educational needs, the funding our teachers deserve towards their professional development, and the advanced educational needs of a district that currently prides itself on being ahead of the curve in the 21st century educational world. The pot of money is only so big. Are we going to spend it on RCO contracts or on our teachers and students? Who are you looking out for?
Good evening. Hi, Daylon Leach. I'll try to be brief.
Excuse me, sir, what, what part of the district do you reside?
I don't live in the school district. I'm the state senator for the area. I'm happy to speak, but only if it's appropriate.
Okay, then I would like Mr. Joe from ABC to have the floor after him. That would be great. So Joe can speak, whoever Joe is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm just here to talk a little bit about the experience of these particular types of ordinances in other areas around the state that I've observed them. There's a number of them in my district, and there are a number in other districts that I've gone to, and on the, both the Education Committee and the Labor Committee. So we've had opportunities to have hearings on these and hear experiences around the state. The only, just want to make a couple of points, and I think others will speak to, you know, the value of having vetted and trained and experienced people doing the kind of construction that we're talking about with the stakes so high financially. I just want to focus on one aspect of it which I have observed, which I think is, is of value, and that's the apprentice program and the apprentice requirement. I just, by way of background, my, my mother was a public school teacher for a long time at the Votech School, and they, she worked with a lot of apprenticeship programs, and she found them extremely valuable. And I, when I got out of law school and I went to, I had no apprenticeship, I went to become a lawyer, and I, I got pretty good grades in law school, and then my first week at the new job, some person came in and they said that they wanted a divorce, and I, I said, well, and go get one. What do you want from me? I didn't know anything about actually how to do anything, which I think would really have been valuable to me the first couple of years I practiced law, frankly, as a legislator too. And the apprenticeship programs, I believe, do a number of things that are very important. Number one, they have a farm team, a group of people that are learning under more experienced people, and then when you hire them, you know that they have some experience and some training and know what they're doing, and they've been vetted, and they're going to presumably do a good job. I would note that we have a significant skilled labor shortage in Pennsylvania and nationally right now. We have a lot of people, and we have a lot of employers who've testified to us that they have trouble finding people who are, you know, competent to do the job that they need done. Apprentice programs is a major way to address that issue. And finally, you know, requiring these people to have some sort of apprenticeship strengthens the apprenticeship programs, which helps them grow, and is just a benefit across the board to everybody. You don't have to be a union to have an apprenticeship program or apprenticeship requirement, and, you know, so we have found value in that program around the state. I just wanted to impart that and then allow you to get on with your evening. So thank you all so much for taking the time to listen to me.
Well, good evening, everyone, and good evening to the Board. And greetings to a very packed house again. Packed house last time, too. And I think because it's an important issue-
Before you state your name and residency-
Oh, sure. Sorry, I thought was partly introduced, but you're right. My name is Joe Propilia. I'm president and CEO of ABC Eastern Pennsylvania. We represent one chapter of 70 nationwide, and we represent both union and non-union companies. So we're what we call merit shop, merit solution based. I came tonight, one, because I am a graduate of Plymouth White Marsh Colonial Middle School, Ridge Park, and I echo all the sentiments that were said tonight. We, under no circumstances, would want to have people that aren't trained performing in our schools, much to Adam's point that he made last, last meeting. But the one thing I will say is that you are mandating something within that Class A apprenticeship, and I will say that is a so-called Class A apprenticeship, because truly, if you want to be a Class A or any type of apprenticeship worth its salt, you want to be state and federally recognized. That's your only real requirement. From there, you really just need to evaluate the contractor. Look at your procurement practices. Look at the companies you're hiring. Now, let's, let's be frank here. There are union and non-union in this area. How many, how many people are from a union in the room? How many of you in the union are proud of what you do or have done if you're retired? And that's how you should feel.
Joe, can I ask you, you're addressing the Board on the-
No, I am.
On items that are on the agenda at this time during the meeting.
Absolutely. Now, I just want to make sure that there's an understanding in the room.
Just ask you to keep your discussion to us and on matters that are particular to the agenda.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
What I, what I'm trying to represent here is that the goal, I think, that you're trying to accomplish is a good one. You should have safe workers in your school. You should be doing that for the best price that you can get, as long as it is safely performed. And I think the method that you're using, I understand it, but it's not the correct method. I don't think it gets you to the, to the end that you want. And I do believe, and the only reason I ask the question of, of the audience is, you need to have both sides at the table. All too often, you don't. And I can say, in this case, I'm fairly confident, I can tell you that I've never addressed the Board, I've never been called. The first time I caught wind of this was pretty much just because there were concerned citizens. Moreover than that, I will say that once I did reach out to all of you, I want to appreciate, especially Felix, and the rest of the Board for reaching back and asking questions, and I look forward to addressing you in the future. But I do want to say that although in the implementation of the RCO you have written, it was said last meeting that that is a union, non-union issue, in effect, the way you've written it, or if you adopt it that way, you've made it or not, you've made a conflict. You don't have to. And that's what I think going forward, if you would bring us, bring both sides at the table, unfortunately, there are two sides, and I do think that that's also inefficient. But you need to have both sides addressing you, and I would say writing an ordinance like this. So thank you for your time. I appreciate being out. I'm sorry I was a little bit out of process asking who was here, but at the same time, I think if you want the best product possible, you need to bring some people to the table together, and you shouldn't have something that you're putting into place that's definitely going to exclude very qualified workers. So thank you for your time.
Hello, Deanna Duranty, White Marsh Township, and since we're going through all of our education, Conshohocken Elementary, Colonial Middle School, and Plymouth White Marsh High School. I don't think people are standing here saying, "We don't want union labor." I am a member of a union. There's a lot of members of the union here. We have teachers, we have builders, we have lots of union membership here. I think the issue goes back to the way that people in the community feel that they have been treated, and what they are seeing by what the Board is doing and how you're behaving towards us, as well as how you've behaved throughout the election. You know, there was a lot made when I was here in February, and I asked Eunice if you had signed some documents, and you said yes, you signed that one document. Well, I have a whole bunch of others here with your signature on them, and we know from these documents that anybody can get at One Montgomery Plaza, how much money has been contributed to building Colonial's future by different unions and different law firms. Mr. Clark, we see your name in here, too. And so that is some of the concern, and those were some of the questions asked, and instead, we've been laughed at, we've been told that we're just not that smart. Well, that's not really the way to handle it. Maybe if you say, "You know what? No, it has nothing to do with this." Fine, then move on. But that's not the way you've dealt with us as members of the public. And so what I'm wondering is, you know, Eunice, especially with your social media profile picture here that says "Union," we get it, it's not a union thing. I'm wondering if some of you maybe want to recuse yourself from the vote, seeing as how things here look. Adam, you posted 29 weeks ago on Facebook how excited and happy you are. Let me just read it exactly. "I'm fortunate to have dear, dear friends and family from many places I've lived who've supported me in this endeavor when people posted pictures of those campaign contributions and where they came from." So if these are your friends and family members here, the unions, then perhaps maybe you recuse yourself in the interest of transparency. And Felix, when you were elected president, Leslie read that very lovely statement about your background, and I believe you're a member of IBEW. So maybe tonight, you don't vote on this, this issue. Maybe that's a way to handle it, to bring some trust back to the people here in this room, that you are transparent and you are listening to what they're saying.
My name's Joe Hunter. I live in Plymouth Meeting. This should not be an issue of union or non-union, like was just brought up. This is the issue of skilled labor or unskilled labor. I'm a corporate safety director for a construction company. I am an outreach instructor for the Department of Labor, OSHA. Unskilled labor, no matter who they work for, whether it's a union or a non-union company, presents hazards. Fatalities. You can go on the Department of Labor, their website, and pull up the statistics for skilled labor and unskilled labor. Whether you call it an apprenticeship program, or whether you go up to the ABC Contractors Association at Germantown Pike in North Wales, where open shop contractors can send their employees to be trained in their field. It's going to benefit the, it's not going to raise taxes, it's not going to bring lawsuits about fatalities. And I'll give you a little story about a lawsuit. My partner worked for an unskilled contractor. We both did. He fell seven floors to his death. His wife hired Maga Lucy. I don't know if anybody in this room knows that name. He found a couple of commas and a couple of words in the contract that was issued to the general contractor from the owner. They were in the wrong spot. Are there any attorneys in here? Do you know what I'm talking about? And he was awarded $19.6 million. That's going to make your taxes go up. When you have unskilled contractors come in and don't provide the PPE, the protective equipment for their workers to do the job safely, or today I'm an electrician, tomorrow I'm a carpenter. I called OSHA on the job site here, when your roofers hit that roof, because that, I took an oath as an outreach instructor for the Department of Labor, because there's no fall protection. I see yellow flags up, they didn't have a safety monitor telling them they were getting close to the edge. They broke the rule. The OSHA standard is the minimum law. That's the people that were hired prior to this Board getting in there to put that building up. And I'm going to continue to do that, because I don't give a rat's ass if it's union or non-union. I care about the immediate danger to life and health. I've been in safety for 13 years as a result of my partner falling seven floors. I'm not going to watch anybody in my community be killed because they're unskilled labor. I give fall protection training to people who don't speak English, just shake their head, and then ask them to put a harness on and watch them fumble around. I can't let them get up in elevated heights. So anybody that is going to tell you that this is a union or a non-union issue, they're off, they're off track a little bit. It's skilled and unskilled labor. Skilled labor will bring the job in, under budget, on time, safely. Three things you need to be productive, to have a quality product. Unskilled labor built Connaughtelli Toyota. They started in March, I don't remember the year. Three months later, the Metroplex started, and seven stores were open in November, not one car was on the Connaughtelli lot. Skilled labor, unskilled labor. The guy who operated the crane at Connaughtelli got out of the crane, ran up the column, put the bolts in, got down off the column, went over, hooked another piece of beam up, got into the crane, took it up there. Unskilled labor. Anybody in this audience know what I'm talking about? That's the difference between skilled labor and unskilled labor. You have to have qualified people on the project. Vetting them, absolutely. Get a safety policy from them, check their EMR rate. Companies who have an EMR rate of over 1%, cancel that name and open up on their ABC Business, ABC LLC, ABC Jack Smith, ABC Bet Smith, because they get new insurance when they open up on the new businesses. Companies that have been in business for 20 to 30 years have that skilled labor. So me, I'll spend a little bit more money on my taxes if there's not going to be a fatality in my community. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Tim Ferris. I live at 300 Summit Avenue, White Marsh Township. Tonight, I'm here as an advocate for the apprenticeship program. I can tell you that some 40 years ago, I started out as a first-year apprentice, but, you know, I can't tell you too much. I don't remember too many details these days. But what I'd like to do is introduce you, if you indulge me, to the face of the present day apprenticeship program. I'd like to introduce my son, Thomas. Miho. Thomas has graduated Plymouth White Marsh High School. What year, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you guys for some dates here. What year did he graduate?
2008.
2008. In the 11th, when he was in 11th grade, he came up to me and his mother and said, "I don't want to be an electrician, Dad, there's no way I want to be an electrician." And it's, you know, it's good parents, we were very supportive of that. And for me, I was devastated. So two, so I went two years into his, into his college path, he came up to us and decided, "Well, you know what? This isn't working out. I want to be an electrician." So right now, he's working at one of the local pharmaceuticals. I'd like to introduce my other son, Christopher. Christopher's kind of the same path, but he said to me, "Dad, there's no way I'm going to college, I want to be an electrician." And, and right now, he's working at a school doing a renovation this summer. I'd like to introduce Dan, Dan, Dan MacArthur. Also a graduate, Plymouth White Marsh High School. When did you graduate?
2011.
And Dan was?
2011.
2011. Dan decided that he wanted to be, wanted to go and operate heavy equipment, bulldozer, back, backhoes, cranes, not necessarily an apprenticeship, but, you know, it's sort of a, kind of a pay-for's kind of school that you go to. After a certain amount of time, he decided that he, he no longer wanted to do that. And, and, and he decided, he went, he got into an apprenticeship, and is right now working at one of the local universities. Jonathan Stats. When did you graduate? You went to PW, right?
2011.
2011. One, one afternoon, I was up Montgomery County Community College with my son, Thomas, and I ran into Jonathan sitting, he was sitting in a, in a chair, going over a book, trying to decide what he wanted to do for the rest of his life, or what he wanted to do with college. And I asked him, I said, "Well, what are you going to do?" He said, "I'm not sure what I'm going to do, but I think I'm just going to take some general courses and, you know, figure it out from there." Well, what he figured out was that he decided to go serve our country in the United States Military, in the United States Army. And I appreciate your service, Jonathan. After, after his commitment, he came back and we talked again, and I discussed to him, I said the same thing, "What do you want to do?" He decided, you know, he wanted to stay in, he was in the trades in, in the Army, and right now, he's, he's in an apprenticeship program. He's in, so, so this is, this is, this is the present day face of the apprenticeship program, okay? All, all Plymouth White Marsh students, all with their own path towards the apprenticeship program. Another person I'd like to introduce to you is Kyle. Come up here, Kyle. Kyle's, Kyle's, come on up here. Kyle's, Kyle's, you know, he's, he's a young guy, yeah, he's, he's, he's almost a young man. But I can tell you, I've introduced Kyle to the electrical industry recently. Now, Kyle was going to be, you know, he, for a time, he was a student in the Colonial School District. Right now, he's attending one of, one of our neighboring school districts. Kyle, Kyle's, we talked, Kyle's talked to me about what he wants to do, and quite frankly, in another two years, he's going to have to start making some decisions on how he wants to proceed in his life. Now, I've known Kyle my entire life, and I can tell you that the apprenticeship program is going to be a good path for him. Now, I could stand here and tell you that I don't really need your help, because quite frankly, there's plenty of apprentices in the pipeline, and-
30 seconds, please.
And I'm, and I'm more, you know, more about not working these days. But you are in a unique position to be able to help people like these guys, like Kyle, who are going to be looking for, for an apprenticeship program, and my sons, who are going to be contractors, and people like him who are going to be contractors, that need a steady flow of trained, skilled, qualified electricians. Thank you for your time.
My name is Chris Epstein, White Marsh Township resident. I want to preface my comments by stating that I'm not anti-union. I have family members who have been members of various unions. I'm also not against policies that ensure safe practices and quality workmanship. I am, however, against restricting competition, and I'm a proponent of being fiscally responsible when it comes to our tax dollars. The policy, the Responsible Contractors Policy, as it's currently written, definitely restricts competition among qualified and responsible contractors. In passing the policy as currently written, you're ensuring that our costs will go up significantly, while the quality of workmanship will not change with regards to our district's construction projects. Our buildings have always been built and maintained by highly skilled and well-trained workers who have been, and have been built to the latest safety standards. In fact, the state of Pennsylvania has very strict building codes and regulations that our buildings must comply with. All of our building projects are inspected many times to ensure that these strict codes are followed. If this weren't the case, then I wouldn't be comfortably sending my six kids to our district buildings. Per state law, all contractors working on school district projects must be paid prevailing wage. All contractors must provide certified payrolls every pay period to make sure that all workers on Colonial School District projects are protected. Again, because all of our construction projects are inspected and must conform to very high standards already set by state and municipal codes, the district is protected against shoddy construction. CSD already requires all bidders to be certified and licensed. They list all of this information on the AIA document, A305, which is required for all bidders. In signing this qualified statement, this qualification statement, they are certifying under oath that the information is true and sufficiently complete. Also, all of our bidders must provide a performance bond and a labor and material payment bond equal to 100% of the contract amount within 10 days of being awarded a contract. So our district and our tax dollars have been and will continue to be protected. The only added criteria that this policy currently written is the Class A apprenticeship clause, which states that all bidders must participate in an apprenticeship program as registered by the U.S. Department of Labor. I completely agree with this. I completely agree with this. And all of our previous contractors comply with this. But, the second part of that clause says, "And must have graduated apprentices for three out of the last five years." This is the only part of the policy as written that I disagree with. This is what separates a union shop from an open shop. Union shops can meet this specific requirement because of the way that they're structured. Because the unions can pool all of their members together, they constantly have members graduating from their apprenticeship program. Open shops, however, also have access to a certified apprenticeship program. They're skilled. But because they actually employ their contractors year-round, they do not have a large pool of workers to pull from. Their workers are just as skilled and qualified and certified. Also, the U.S. Department of Labor does not recognize a Class A apprenticeship program. Again, I'm going to say it again, this is a fabricated term, fabricated term that originated with union labor. Lastly, getting back to our tax dollars, I compared all of the various CSD bid awards from our construction projects since 2015. I researched which bidders were from union shops and which units were from open shops. You know what I discovered? If this RCO policy as written was in place in 2015, we, the taxpayers, would have paid $2,773,214 more for the same product. And I have the numbers to back it up. And you can get the numbers from the bids as district members. You can see for yourselves. So, that's all I have to say. I am not against having quality workmanship. I am not against skilled labor at all. I just want to keep the, keep it from restricting who can bid on our projects as long as they're qualified, and they have already been so in the past.
My name is Robert Harris. I live at 2607 Narcissa Road, Plymouth Township. Just a couple of minutes, I want to speak about my particular trade's apprenticeship program. It is a five-year program, broken into 10 six-month periods. An apprentice starts out at 40% of a journeyman's wage and package benefit. He goes to school one day every two weeks for a full eight-hour day. We're fortunate, and we have a day program. Many apprenticeship programs go to school usually two nights a week for probably three, three and a half hours. We're very fortunate and have been for the last 40, 45 years. An apprentice, first day, he has a tour of this building, which we have, we pay for our own training. It's an 80,000-square-foot building. He has a tour of that, the orientation's about two hours. Other paperwork from the Department of Labor has to be filled out, et cetera. And also, the job description is gone over with every one of the apprentices in class, just so he knows what he's in for. He's probably, guy's a pretty good idea of what he's in for if he applied for the program and was accepted and was interviewed. He then goes to school, like I said, eight hours. The second day of class, he goes through an eight-hour safety class. We don't want to send any person out on the job site without adequate training. So he goes eight hours. At the end of that eight hours, there's a test given, which he must pass, or else he goes back on his own time and at night to have a refresher course and test again. But this awards him what's called a PSM card. It's a Process Safety Management Card that allows him to work in any refinery in the Delaware Valley. And you must have this card to enter the gate as a construction worker. Several classes into his first period, since there are 10 six-month periods, he will again go through two additional hours of OSHA training, which will be tested, and he will be awarded an OSHA 10-hour card. So every tool that he has in his toolbox makes him more, her, her, more employable. It's important, the safety aspect is ultra-important, as this previous gentlemen's have just alluded on. Also, there are five years of on-the-job training. If he had full employment for those years, which doesn't always happen, but you would have, we would have graduated an individual who has 10,000 hours of schooling and on-the-job training. I don't know of any other, besides probably a doctor, who goes through the rigorous training and is more extensive than the steamfitter, pipefitter apprenticeship program. Let's say steamfitter, pipefitter, that's a synonymous term. We also are incorporated in our union are welders and service technicians. So these individuals graduate after five years, and they pass a test to become certified and licensed to do the work in the state of Pennsylvania, and is awarded this particular certificate of graduation from the Department of Labor in Harrisburg. So after five years, you become a journey person, since we have many women in our trade now, and you can now go out into field and be confident that you are a qualified, trained individual. And this poor man had his partner fall seven stories, working out in the field. I've seen accidents, because I'm a 52-year member of a local 420. I am retired now. But, yes, I wear accidents on a job, but through OSHA, when it was adopted, I think in 1970, the accident and death fatalities per man-hour worked has dramatically decreased. And that comes through training, whether it's union or non-union, that doesn't matter, a life is a life. And we're here to...
30 seconds, please, 30 seconds.
We're here to provide a qualified individual who works safely and appears on a job, day in and day out, to do the quality job that he was trained for. Thanks so much.
My name's Karen Mondoro. I'm a member or a resident of White Marsh Township. I just have a couple of questions. I, I want to know why this RCO is being handled in the middle of the summer? Why, why now? Why the rush to push it through in two meetings? Why the secret way that it was put on the agenda? Transparency, I guess that's what it comes down to, and that's what I'm asking for. And lastly, why are we ignoring the advice from experienced board members, qualified administrators, and our superintendent, instead of letting inexperienced board members push things through? Thank you.
Linda Dahl, White Marsh resident, resident.
Lina, mind you, in the second round, it's two minutes.
Yes, I do, I read the rules. I'm kind of offended by the scare tactics that have been put around here about safety and unskilled workers. We have never had that situation in our school district. Everyone that's hired, all the jobs that have been done have been done by skilled workers, and it's been completely safe. These are non-issues. The issue here is the pocket of money we're talking about. We only have so much money, and I personally would like it be, be spent on our teachers and our students, not the extra cost it will be when we are trying to train people that it's not part of our school district. We can get the same job done for less money, and it's safe and efficient, and it's been done correctly all this time. There's something else going on here, and I don't like it.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with all of you tonight my experience. My name is Kirby Coughlin Toomey, and I'm speaking on behalf of Local 98's apprenticeship program, IBW. I stand before you as an electrical apprentice, but I stand with all of you as a Montgomery County resident and a mother of two. Prior to my acceptance into apprenticeship, I worked for 10 years as an English teacher in the Philadelphia public schools. Seeing so many parents and residents here tonight is refreshing and humbling, because community involvement in Philadelphia is notoriously low. By a show of hands, how many of you moved to Plymouth, White Marsh, or Conshohocken for its excellent school district?
Kirby, I, this is an opportunity to address to the board, I don't mean to cut into your speech, but just keep it to the board comments.
Okay. Well, Colonial's a tremendous school district, and you pay a lot of tax money to be here. Like you, my husband and I moved to the suburbs to create a nice life for our family. We live in Abington School District, which, not as prestigious as yours, however, we view it as an investment in our community. Our tax dollars, which are far less than yours, but still important, we have it tied up in the district, so it's completely understandable that you want to see your tax money spent responsibly, namely, on the upcoming construction of the middle school. The hot topic as of late is the RCO, the Responsible Contractor Ordinance. Specifically, the language is viewed as limiting and exclusionary. But what makes a contractor responsible comes down to two things: transparency, as I've heard here tonight, and training. Using a responsible contractor guarantees that workers are vetted. As a parent, I don't want anyone working on or around my child's school who is dangerous or dodgy. All members of local unions are screened for criminal background, child abuse, and random drug testing. Responsible contractors take the welfare, wait, excuse me, the welfare of your children just as seriously as you do. They also view safety as paramount, which is why all apprentices receive their OSHA 10 training, as was mentioned before, the very first day of work, and their OSHA 30 within the first year of school. I don't know of any construction company outside of organized labor who requires 30 hours of safety training for all of their employees. In addition to safety training, there are classroom hours that each apprentice goes through. What I have here, and I brought just as a visual, these are my school books. All of these books, just for the very first year. They're heavy. I've been a scholar all of my life, and I can tell you that this training program is absolutely no joke. In order to graduate, I'll have to complete five years of school. I attend classes, four of them, once a week, and I have homework, I have tests, I have finals. We have to maintain a C average. If we don't, we're removed from the program. And alongside of this rigorous training, we must also work 10,000 hours in the field, as was also previously mentioned by Mr. Fitter. At the end of the program, I will receive an associate's degree and the honor of calling myself a journeyman electrician. Other construction workers and contractors, they don't have that sense of pride in their work. There is no certificate, there is no pile of school books, and there's little to no training. Sure, their bid might be the lowest, but are they the most qualified? Absolutely not. That's the difference between responsible contractors and any old company, competent apprentices and qualified workers. I'll leave you with this. If I was to be hired by Colonial School District for the upcoming school year as a teacher, my starting salary would be over $92,000 because of education and experience. I worked 10 years, I have a master's degree, and I have 30 additional credits. A young person fresh out of college with a bachelor's degree would earn less than $49,000. Education and experience make a huge different, difference when it comes to providing for your children and spending your tax dollars. Why then does that theory not carry over to the men and women building the schools? Hiring responsible contractors ensures the job will be done safely, timely, and efficiently for the children, for the taxpayers, and for the workers, because you get what you paid for. Thank you for your time. Thanks, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it.
My name's Tom Manley. I'm a resident of Colonial School District since 2006, and I have three kids in the district currently, one at the high school, one in the middle school going to the high school, and one at White Marsh Elementary. I've been to several of these meetings over the past few months, and I just wanted to sit down to listen and understand what's going on. But when I saw video last week on, or earlier this week, on morethanthecurve.com of one of these union guys getting in the face and physically confronting a Colonial resident, I was outraged. I could not believe what I was seeing. This is unacceptable, and a part of the whole RCO process, I'm afraid. Okay? We don't allow bullies on our playgrounds here in the school district, and this took place right outside of these windows here, out, after school board meeting. I'm actually surprised that no member of the school board has, as of yet, condemned this activity, said anything about it. I'm really disappointed. I would like it if you could, before the end of this meeting, or put it on the schedule for the next meeting, to make it so that that specific incident is condemned, that all people who want to say something nicely are welcome here, but those people who have, are going to be using physical intimidation are not welcome at these meetings. Thank you.
How are you? Terry McGinnis, I'm a White Marsh Township resident. Moved here eight years ago from Upper Dublin. My husband grew up in White Marsh Township. I just want to say that in the eight years we lived in Upper Dublin Township, our taxes increased 70% when they built the new high school. A lot of our friends, it made it unaffordable for them to live there, drove home prices down, and a lot of people left, and I just don't want to see that happen here. There's a lot of good people here. People move here because of the school and because of the low tax rate. So just, I'm just asking you to please, don't rush into any decisions, take everyone who lives in your community into consideration, and don't make this like an Upper Dublin Township thing.
I just have two questions for the board, since we're allowed to address the board, So my question's for everybody sitting here. How many have hired contractors?
Could you please identify yourself and where you live?
Joe Hunter, Plymouth Meeting, 110 Yellowstone Road.
Joe, I just want to remind you that it's, you can address, but it's, it's not a question and answer session.
Okay. So how many people have hired contractors for their home? Everybody in here. How many have went to reviews for those contractors? If you didn't, you're not doing your homework. But if I told you your house, but if I told you you could buy a car for $10,000 less with no airbags in it, who would buy that car? So, it's not a threat tactic. It's not a union or non-union. A union guy threatening the guy out here, I'm open shop. And our guys threaten guys. It's both sides of the fence. Okay? So let's make it an equal thing, all right? I'm an open shop contractor. That's correct. I was a union contractor, and now I'm in the open shop. I have both sides of the fence. And I am supporting this. Skilled labor does not get people killed. Thank you.
Joe Propilia, President/CEO of ABC Eastern. Actually, I think you had one citizen who hit and nailed it. Your RCO, as I mentioned, is basically good. What you're doing, though, with that graduation requirement, that single source, you're pushing things to one segment of the labor pool. The reason being, and that's the union side, because of the two models, unfortunately, that we have in this state right now, that there has to be a delineation between the two. As many have said here tonight, just be skilled, be safe. That's what, that's what folks do in my programs, that's what my companies do, because I got to tell you, in the market that we're in, if we did something that was unsafe, if we didn't have trained folks working on individual sites, they don't win the next job. It's just that simple. So, again, there is a union, non-union element to this because of that graduation rate. If you remove that, you basically have something that is fair, unless anybody else has an objection. You can vet an apprenticeship program on your own. And I said, as I said, if you're state and federally recognized, you've both got a good start, and that's union or non-union. So I just wanted to point out that that, I think, is, is, is your linchpin. That's the part that I'm happy to work with you on. You have plenty of folks that are from the union side of, of the world. I'm sure they're happy to stand with me and, and work with you. But right now, tactics aside, I know there's been a lot of comments on how the board is operated, and some of those things...
30 seconds, please.
Sure, some of those things are questionable. I've only seen a few meetings, and there's some things that seem like they're out of, out of policy, including the last meeting. But the long story is short, let's get to the issue. Let's get to the goal... Let's get to the goal that you want. And the goal that you want is to make sure that you have the best quality contractors working on your sites, giving you the best product, and you should be not excluding anyone. That three-year requirement does that. It slants the playing field. Thank you.
Hi, Erin Salino, Plymouth Township. So I agree with a lot of what was said here today. We all want people who are skilled, people who know what they're doing. There's no doubt, there's no dispute. I think everyone here agrees to that. I had an issue, actually, with the policy committee last week. The first speaker, who was on the White Marsh Sewer Authority, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, but he specifically said, "My shop, my group, we won't bid on contracts that don't have an RCO in place." And I thought about that for a couple days, and it kind of bothers me because it says, "Why not? If you're as good as you are, why would you absolutely not bid on every project that you're qualified to bid on?" And all I could come up with is that someone, they think someone will undercut their bid, and that's why they don't do it. So if you truly think that you're the best for the job, you can do it safely, why would you not go for a contract that doesn't have an RCO? And it hasn't stopped people in the past, and I'm sure Mr. Yam can attest to that, that we've had non-union bidders win contracts. There was a lot of them in the high school and other projects. So why would you not bid on a contract if you think you're the best, the safest, and you have that, all that training? So that's just something to think about. So are they automatically taking yourselves out of the bid in order to not be undercut economically? Are these, the concern that a lot of people here have, and I have, is that you're limiting your competition? And economics says that if you have less supply, demand goes up, prices go up. So if there's less bidders, automatically your price can increase because you're not going to have someone come in at a more reasonable price. And currently, the procedures are that you have to be the lowest bidder that meets all the criteria. We don't let anybody just win the bid, but you have to meet very strict, rigorous criteria in order to be selected, including all the safety measures, and paying a fair wage, prevailing wage. So now that's, it's in question. So when someone specifically says, "I won't bid on your project unless you have an RCO," it makes me and others question, "What are your true motives for not bidding?" Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Petrino, and I am a resident of White Marsh Township. Two things: I want to say thank you for putting the meeting protocols on the agenda and reviewing those. I think that comes next, but I think that will be very helpful so that when people are, you know, come up to speak, they aren't questioned about what's going on. But I also want to say, you know, we have hired a really great administration team at the policy meeting, and tonight, a lot of different people have given their opinions. But has our superintendent been asked his opinion and how he feels about the policy and what his recommendations are for the policy? And is his point of view being taken into consideration? Because he really, truly is the expert. You know, we hired him to run our school district. I think we all have a great bit of faith in him, and I know that he has drafted and worked with the board on a lot of the policies that have been made. This one seems that he was not part of. I don't know if there will be discussion tonight about that, about what his opinion is on it. I don't want to put you on the spot, Dr. Christian, but just, you know, you're the expert. So we hired you to lead our school district. I would just love to know what your thoughts and feelings are on this policy and how it will affect all of us. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Joett. I'm in White Marsh Township. I have two sons that are through the school district. I have been involved in a number of different PTOs over the past 18 years, I want to say, including years ago, I was honored enough to be appointed two times to the school board. I'm not sure, I do want to say, back when I was on the board and comments, we were allowed to answer questions, but I could be wrong, that was a long time ago. The issue that I have today, I'm not going to pretend I know everything about union versus non-union. What seems to be an issue since December is transparency. You're not working together. You are supposed to be the ones that hire a great administration and take their opinion, educated opinion on these things, and you don't even care. You're not working together. I don't understand why. Why aren't you working together when you are the ones that have to negotiate contracts with all of the other wonderful unions that we have in our school district? You can't work together, how do you expect them to sit at a table with you and work with you? You really need to do a better job. Thank you.
Seeing no more public comment, we'll move forward to the next part of our meeting. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have a brief superintendent's report, personnel report in particular. Board action is requested for the attached personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, and/or transfer. They are subject to the presentation of valid credentials and employment verification.
Make that report into motion. I hear a second. Any questions? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. So, Doc, just to clarify, that was superintendent's report and personnel report all together? Okay.
Forgive me. Can I ask who seconded the motion, please? Thank you.
Okay, new business. We have board policy revisions on a second read. Chen?
A motion to accept changes to board policy 005, 006, 006.1, 007, and 227 on a second read basis.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
You have a second. Any discussion on the second read?
Could we just briefly state, for the record and the public, sort of what these, what these policies are? Doesn't have to be long or detailed, but...
You want to do that, Mike, or you want...
Bear with me for one second. All right, the policies up for second read include policy 005, which is local board procedures, talks about organization of the board officers, fairly basic stuff. Policy 006.1 is attendance at meetings via electronic communication, so we had an example of that last week, where we use Skype, and we also have times where board members may call in due to personal or work commitments. That was actually 006.1. 006 is the authority of the board and how meetings will be conducted, mostly procedural. Policy 007 is the policy manual access, so we have it electronically, and we also have hard copies of all the policies available in our schools. And these are all part of the zeros, which are general governing policies for all 500 school districts in the Commonwealth. And then we did have one policy, 227, related to controlled substances and paraphernalia, and that, that policy had not been updated in 30, 35 years. So we are up to, we are current with current school code, and are obviously, we prohibit controlled substances in our schools, whether it's employees and/or students. So we have to have, we have a practice for what happens when people make poor decisions.
And these are all PSBA-recommended?
They are, and they were reviewed at our policy committee. They were on for first read last month. After tonight, pending their approval, they will be, they will be in effect.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And all in favor of accepting the second reads on these policies, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays, ayes have it. First read.
Policies up for first read include policy 100, which is comprehensive planning. As we discussed last week, all school districts are required to go through comprehensive planning. Used to be called strategic planning, and there are several elements within that, which include professional education, induction, technology, special education, curriculum, all the things that comprise a school district as it relates to education. Some of those have three-year time limits, some have six-year time limits. We are currently in the process of comprehensive planning. Dr. McKinney is leading that, and we have a committee of stakeholders, which includes our teachers, administrators, parents, community members that have been contributing to that process. Policy 102 is our academic standards policy. Once again, required for all school districts in the Commonwealth, have to, are founded on academics. We are founded on that, that is our mission, right? We've been talking a lot about other things. We need to remember that that is our ultimate mission here. And we have the, what's required for the state and the more stringent requirements for the Colonial School District as it relates to academic standards. And then finally, policy 226. I mentioned 227 recently, that was decades old as it related to controlled substances. When we have students who make poor decisions as they relate to bringing controlled substances to school, it does happen, not frequently, and we have wonderful kids, but sometimes they make poor decisions. And we need to have a process for searching them, because ultimately, what you're talking about is making sure that you're not only ensuring that child's safety and well-being, but the other students that are in the school where the situation is occurring. Generally, it's high school, possibly middle school, not too much in the elementary school. So we have a process that we follow, and this searches policy delineates what the school district's responsibility is, what law enforcement's responsibility is, and how we'll communicate with parents and the community as it relates.
And are these recommended by PSBA?
They are, and modified through our policy committee to fit, and the policy on searches is a school code requirement, too, so we're meeting two standards there: PSBA's and the school code.
I have to make the motion.
You made the motion?
I have to make the motion for B. We didn't do that yet.
Okay, sorry about that.
Motion to accept changes to board policy 100, 102, and 226 on a first read basis.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Could I just, just a couple questions on the 226 policy about searches for Dr. Christian. How old was our policy before we updated it?
It was, I don't have an exact number, but it was similar to the other one. It was decades old.
20, 30 years old, okay. And, and obviously, this is something that would conceivably impact material that's in the student handbook. So I assume that student handbooks, then, will get updated going forward based on what's in the current policy.
So, yes, all the principals submitted their changes to me, actually, today, and the high school's still working on a few. And then we actually are meeting with Mrs. Northcutt next week to review all those, and the handbooks will be up. First, we'll talk about them at Community Relations in August, and then at the board meeting, we have a policy that actually says that, and we'll, we'll get to updating it. There's a policy in the district that says the board will approve the discipline code for each school annually. Well, we don't do that. We have one law, we have, we have our process and practice. The handbooks really delineate what the discipline is, so we'll update that as well. But we'll do all of that in the coming, coming month prior to school beginning.
That sounds great, and I know it's a lot of work, so I appreciate all the work that goes in at the building level, at the administration level. And I know that if Mrs. Northcutt is going to be part of looking at the handbooks and approving them, they're going to be some of the best-written, edited handbooks that, around, I think.
And, and I just wanted to take a minute to kind of give a big-picture idea of what we're doing with our policy committee right now, and how this got started. I mean, could you walk us through, I guess, the genesis of all this?
So, obviously, I've been in the district just about a year, and this is one of the goals of the board, to update policies. It can be an unwieldy task when you talk about policies that range from the zeros up to the 900s, so you're talking about dozens, if not over 100, policies, some of which were updated recently, some that are up to 30 or 40 years old. We kind of have a dual approach. One is to go chronologically, working with PSBA, which is, which this district is a member, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association in Mechanicsburg. They provide us with templates for the policies. Policy committee looks at them individually, and then we add, or delete, or change as warranted and as it fits the Colonial School District. While we're looking at them chronologically, we went into the zeros, now we're into the 100s. We also are handpicking some policies, such as searches and drug and alcohol policy, 226, 227, so that they're up to speed prior to the student's return. We haven't gotten to them all. Policy development should be deliberate, and so that you make good policy. So we will continue to work on them, and then we'll have, once we get through all the way up to the 900s, we should have a nice rotation where we're just making revisions as needed rather than wholesale changes.
We're going to have a policy on policy review, most likely, which a policy theoretically should be reviewed and approved by a board every three to five years, as a rule of thumb. Is that correct?
I would agree with that.
That's a fair statement. So, and each policy, what, what's the process of approving a policy? Walk us through how all policies are treated.
As a general rule, we get templates from PSBA. The administration will review them frequently. I'll have them, when we have an administrative team meeting, we'll review all the elements of the policy, make any recommendations, then share them with the chair of the policy committee. We'll put it on the agenda for the policy committee and the board to discuss. That's where it's really, it's a working draft. If necessary, our solicitor will contribute to that to make sure it's in accordance with, and we just can't say, "I can't make up a policy and say this would be really great to have and violate the school code." All those, I've had a few colleagues that have tried it in the past unsuccessfully. But that being said, once that happens, it goes to the board for a first read and a vote, and if there's any changes, they'll be made, and then it goes the following month for a second read before it goes into effect.
And we've been following that process for every policy. It goes to the policy committee, gets voted out of policy committee for full board consideration. For a first read, there's an opportunity at a second policy committee under Old Business to discuss any items, and then it goes to the board, if it gets voted back out again, it would go to a board for a second read, and then the policy becomes official. So that's the flow that every policy has been...
For the ones that have been approved, yes.
Right. We follow that for all our policies to this point. Okay.
Dr. Christian, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
All of these policies, are they going, are they all going through you so that you're aware of them before they hit the policy committee? I know, I'm putting you on the spot.
At some point, yes. At some point. I mean, let's not, let's not ignore the elephant in the room, right? We have a policy that we have folks that are in favor of, and some folks who are not in favor of.
No, I'm just talking about the process, and the process should be, in my view, and I think there are others that agree with me, the process should be that most policies are developed via the superintendent or PSBA, and certainly, the board can suggest policies like the RCO that they would like to see addressed, but that's done within the policy committee, not in advance, and the policy appears at a policy committee. And I made that point last week, and I just want to make it one more time.
Can I just, I just want to bring us back to sort of the three first-read policies that are, that are currently, I think there was a motion and a second, and are actually currently before the board, which I think are 100, 102, and 226, and figure we should sort of wrap up that discussion before, before we move on.
I have a question about 226 before we move on.
Sure.
There was some discussion...
There was some discussion at the policy meeting with respect to the section on searches involving the removal of clothing or examination beneath clothing, and there was sort of some back and forth about that not being something that the district likes to engage in at all, and whether that language should be there at all, and there, that there might be some changes to that. I'm not seeing any changes to that language so far.
No, we did, I did modify that. I eliminated a portion, and I can foredo the part I eliminated. The only time we would ever do that would be with, in conjunction with the district solicitor and the police, and if we felt there was an imminent danger to the students or staff in any school.
And so that language would be addressed specifically in the policy? I think it, you know, to put those parameters around it in the policy?
I think it does say that, but I'll go back.
Just to be sure.
Yes, sure.
I think it would be great with, I don't know how the, the board docs works, but when we're doing, when we're approving changes, I wonder if it can show the edits.
Sure.
You know, so the strike line, yeah, 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 so that we can see what.
But this is first read, but I did, you know, I did go back and take out the part that I was concerned with because that's not our practice, nor should it be unless, you know, sadly, we've, obviously, you know, schools have experienced some tragedies in the very recent past, so if there's imminent danger, we will do what we have to do to protect all students and all staff only in extreme circumstances and in consultation with the solicitor and law enforcement.
I think this mentions consult, consulting with the solicitor but not law enforcement, so.
Okay. I'll go back and work on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nays, ayes have it. All right, Jen, new policy, first read?
Motion to approve board policy eight-two-six, responsible contractors on a first-read basis.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? A second? Any discussion?
I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion. I have a lot of concerns, and I'll list them, but not necessarily in order of importance. My first concern would be that we're possibly subjecting ourselves to lawsuits for violating fiduciary responsibility by being so specific in directing money to specific organizations. We would be collectively, as a school district, and individually as board members liable to damages. My first concern. My second concern, all the red herrings that are being thrown out, whether it be about safety, because all our contractors are certified by the state, or whether it be we're going to help all our students get jobs. I did some research today with the tech school, which I'm a board member, and 1.7% of our students are in contracting programs. 1.7% of our high school students. That means 98.3 are not. My third concern would be taxes, as was mentioned. I saw in the inquiry the other day that over ten years, we have averaged, not averaged, we've totaled a 32% tax increase at Colonial, which is middling when you look on all the lists. Upper Dublin, which was mentioned before, has gone up 48% after their building program. I'm concerned about taxes. I am concerned that we are overruling our superintendent, who we work so diligently to hire. Lots of jobs out there. Finally, I'm concerned about the rush to judgment. It was only eight days ago we were introduced to this policy, eight days. And that's after it was announced at the last week, at the last week's meeting, that surreptitiously, this policy began in May. And none of the board members, none of the board members I know were aware of it at all, and they know she's dumped on us last week. Now, I may be, and I may approve of changes if we made it just, all contractors must have an apprentice program. I think that provides us with skilled workers. I think it eliminates the specificity of directing it to anyone special. I don't understand why we're having a first read after we have scheduled an August sixth meeting to hear all the input from all the experts, whether they be impartial or, or not impartial. So they're my concerns, and based upon this concern, I would like to introduce a motion to table this until the August meeting.
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion to table with a second.
Can I, can I, we can discuss that real quick?
No.
You can't discuss it?
No.
Okay.
Technically, once a motion for ta, to table is made, and again, we don't follow Robert's rules 100% here, nobody does. But technically, once a motion to table is made and seconded, there is no discussion on a motion to table. It takes precedence from all other motions on the floor, and it should be voted on. If it is approved, the item is set aside for another time. If it is, if it is not approved, we return to the original motion that's on the floor. Then, then the discussion of the original motion continues.
All right, we have a motion to table. All those in favor of tabling this motion, say yes.
Yes.
No? Ayes have it. All right, let's continue the discussion.
So what I was going to say after the motion to table was, I wanted to thank everybody who took the time to speak this morning, this evening. It's been a long night already. I learned a ton, and I appreciate it. A lot of the information I heard, I knew already because I have been trying to educate myself over the last week. Some of the information I heard was a different take or a different spin that I found myself saying, huh. That is the process. The process is learning. The process is doing our homework, doing our due diligence, how we love that word, in a transparent way, we also love that word, doing our homework and making a decision. When we voted this to go out of policy committee last week, I was on that annoying TV over there, I apologize for that. I voted no, not on the policy. I will likely vote for this policy if there's some changes to it. I voted no to get it out of committee because we should not be having a first-read basis yet. We need to learn what we just learned from everybody, and then we need to have our, our next policy committee meeting, or our FMT meeting, excuse me, and learn. There is no rush. We don't go out to bid till the spring. There is no value to pushing this any sooner. I know we have a timetable to get our building, our middle school built, so we can get our students in there and fit them in the school. This has nothing to do with the timetable. This should have been tabled. I'm disappointed yet again. Politic, it came out of policy committee, it didn't get tabled, so we're going to discuss it here. We're going to continue to do our homework, and hopefully, by the time we get to the next meeting, we will have the education necessary, and we won't have, you know, lost an opportunity to learn and make an educated decision. So I appreciate your comments, Mel. I'd love to hear what everybody else has to say. But this is the time where we have to take what everybody taught us during public comment, which is not as official as I would have liked, and, and discuss what we've learned and what we think.
If I could add my last concern that I missed. I'm concerned that for 50 years, the people sitting up here in the school board never suffered even a hint of impropriety. And now, in the last seven months, there's a, a tone that people are perceiving that we're in a pay-to-play atmosphere, and that worries me a lot.
That's, I've been trying to read as much as possible, looking at some policies that have been developed by other school districts, looking at what the differences are with what we have, looking at our contracting processes here in Colonial School District. And I put out a question that the only thing that I could see that was unique in the policy was the apprenticeship program. And, and as has been stated, the, the big area of controversy seems to be the Class A apprenticeship program designation. And I had asked a question about it and received the information that this is not a federal and state designation. The registration with an approval of an apprenticeship program is done by the federal or state government. So that the Class A apprenticeship program isn't something that is specifically required to have a legal apprenticeship program. And that's, that's an area where I really want to have more information and to be able to hear more about from experts that we support apprenticeship programs. What difference it would make if the term Class A apprenticeship program were removed from this policy? How would it help? How could it hurt? And that I need to know more about.
So what is the process, Dr. Christian or, or Mr. Clark, of getting that answer to us? When do we get that? I, I mean, does it happen at a next policy committee, a next FMT meeting, a next?
Any, any of the questions, any of the, excuse me for interrupting.
No.
Any of the questions that are raised tonight, just like last week, that we need to take a look at, we'll do that and get that information over to you as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to first apologize for what I'm about to read because I never read things. I just try to wing it, but I'm a little bit shaky here tonight because this is very personal to me. I've had a lot of thrones, stones thrown at my tenure on the board and other people's tenure on the board. And so I'm going to read, and please accept my apologies for that. In my years on the board, we have been fortunate enough to retain, hire and retain top-quality cabinet, administrators, teachers, and support staff. And we've recently hired a great new superintendent out of a pool of exceptional applicants. Dr. Christian impressed us with his experience in all areas, including dealing with new construction in his previous positions. And now, in the run-up to the biggest construction project of our lifetimes in Colonial, many members of this board, most of whom have less than one year of experience on the board, are ignoring their advice. I and others have asked to delay the vote on this somewhat politically motivated RCO so we can hear from experts like Dr. Christian, Mr. Yen, and outside sources. None of us are saying that we are opposing this. We need more time. We need more information. Experts were available and ready to speak tonight, but we're not allowed to do so. So instead of listening to the experts and gathering information needed for a project that will affect students, teachers, staff, and taxpayers for years to come, this board is moving forward at breakneck speed to satisfy, I don't know whom, party leaders, contributors, I have no idea, while ignoring the needs of students, teachers, staff, and administrators who make the Colonial School District the outstanding district that it is. I've served on this board for 16 years, and I've been very, very proud of the talent of our students, teachers, staff, and administrators. And now, as we ignore their advice, I have never been more disappointed with the motives and decisions of some of my fellow board members, who seem to have forgotten that they represent every single member of this community, not just the people who voted for them or who donated to their campaign.
So we've heard a lot of criticism about the policy and about the concern that this is a pro-union policy and that this will drive up costs. I've heard no data to back this up. No data that show that broadly responsible contractor ordinances affect the costs of projects. I hear. That's what I've been told. You have data from one project.
Excuse me, Chris. Thank you.
But again, data anecdotes are not data. Anecdotes are not data. Anecdotes are, somebody told me this. I heard. That is not the preponderance of data. That is not backed up by independent research. And so I'm, you know, if we're talking about being concerned about how we're conducting ourselves as a board, we've had ample time to do independent research and learn for ourselves, and that's part of our duty as board members, is to educate ourselves and do research. And yet, we have had board members here saying, well, I did my research, but I didn't bring anything with me to support it. That's not doing our duty as board members. I am absolutely in support of unions. I made no secret of that during my campaign. My parents, my father was in the Communication Workers of America for 43 years as a newspaperman. My mother is in the Steel Workers Union, she's a librarian, but she's in the Steel Workers Union for a town in Massachusetts. And our family was absolutely able to do what we needed to do because of the support that my parents had from their union jobs. And I am not ashamed of that, and I don't like that being used as a dirty word. Unions support families. Other jobs support families too. But I have no shame in the fact that I grew up in a union household, and I will support unions. And what is on my Facebook page was in response to the Janus decision, which frankly kneecaps public sector unions, which include the teachers in our school district. So I, I am frankly outraged at the maligning of unions and people who support them that I've heard in this dialogue. We know apprenticeships are important. The governor just approved $7 million to support apprenticeships in Pennsylvania. I think that's incredibly important. I sit on the Joint Operating Committee for Monco. And if only 1.8% of our students are in construction programs or apprenticeship programs, that's a question I have for the, for the administration there. Why don't we have more? We know that these are pathways, not the only pathways, but pathways to great jobs. We should be promoting that. This policy promotes safety. It promotes training programs. I've heard talk about that graduation rates are somehow an outrageous requirement. If you're sending your kid to college, are you going to want to pay tuition at a school that only graduates students every other year, or are you going to encourage your student, your child or a student to go into a program that only graduates students every couple of years? No, you want a robust program that is producing graduates and provides a robust training program. And so I have absolutely no concern about that. And until I hear data that say, absolutely, these will drive up our costs from many school districts and many municipalities, I think that there is absolutely no reason not, for us not to consider this policy at this time.
If I can reply, I'm outraged at your famed outrage. None of, nobody up here has maligned unions. A lot of the stuff here, we're union members. I was for 35 years. We are for open bidding process, period. As far as doing research, that's why we want more time, so we can bring in experts. It's my experience, when people with such a bias as you have do research, they will find all the research they want in their favor and ignore the other research. That's why I want neutral people to make presentations to us. Let the pro, pro-A apprentice program people make presentations, let open apprentice people make presentations. I'd like to hear it all, so I can make an informed decision. But don't say anybody up here has maligned unions. What you have said is you will automatically give everything to the unions, which is a perfect example of violating fiduciary responsibility. You said you will always favor unions.
No, I said I will always support unions personally, and I will never say differently. That is not the same as saying that I would always award a contract to unions over non-unions.
You sound like somebody else walking back something I just heard on television written nationally.
Can I just speak for a minute here? I'd, I'd like to address this, this issue. And I'd like to address what some people have raised about the conduct of, of the board. Sorry about that. I really appreciate everybody coming out to share their perspectives. I really appreciate everybody coming out to share their perspectives on both sides of the issue. It's obviously an important and a necessary discussion that we're having in public. We had at the Policy Committee meeting in public. We're having in public tonight. We'll have again at a Policy Committee meeting next month, and again at a Board meeting next month. So this is open and out in front of the public, and we have people here on both sides of the issue. We have people on the Board on both sides of the issue, and I think that's fine. I think that is absolutely, I think that's absolutely fine. I think that's how decisions are made. You know, we heard Mr. Papiglia from ABC say, there are a lot of good things about this. He's got concerns about the apprenticeship portion. He's coming to our next Policy Committee meeting. He's already sent us information. We're gonna have a chance to ask him questions, to potentially do revisions. Nothing is, is set in stone. And so I think it's, I think it's great that we have this engagement from members of our community on both sides of the issue to share their concerns, to share their concerns about apprenticeships and about training the next generation of, of workers and meeting the skilled, the skilled worker gap, which I, which I do think is, is real. People sharing their opinions about safety and, and quality and how that should be important. You know, we heard from a gentleman tonight who talked about losing a friend because of, because of inadequate training and how important that is. And yes, we, you know, as far as I know, we've been lucky here, and that has not happened. But I don't, I don't want that ever to happen on one of our projects here. I also would, you know, welcome everybody who's come out to share their concerns about, about taxes. You know, I pay taxes, all of us pay taxes, and it is certainly a concern. It is certainly a concern when we have a high school project, when we have a, a middle school project coming up, which is necessary to, to, because of the age of the building and, and enrollment growth in this district. Frankly, we're doing such a good job, more people want to come here, which I think is a wonderful thing. And I am definitely sensitive to the burden that we place on our taxpayers when, you know, when we have to raise taxes because we have increasing teacher salaries and increasing pension obligations that we have to meet. And when we try to invest in our schools to build for the future, and whether that's in Plymouth Elementary, White Marsh Elementary, Ridge Park, Concha Hockin Elementary, Colonial Elementary, the middle school, or the high school, we're investing for our future. And to me, I want that long-term investment, which is a 50-year investment, to pay off. I want skilled people doing the work so the work is done well, and so our investment pays off long-term, and that in 15 or 20 years, we're not having to fix problems that could have been avoided in the first place. So I'm happy to hear different points of view on, on both sides. And contrary to some of the assertions tonight, I actually do listen to what you have to say. And I take into account all feedback from whatever source received and evaluate it, and I have to come to my own independent judgment. Nobody's telling me how to vote. Nobody's telling me what decision to make. I have to make my own judgment. And folks may disagree with that judgment, and that's okay. I don't mind if you disagree with where I stand, as long as you know where I come from, you know that I've listened to you, that I've taken your feedback into account, and that I've come to a considered judgment. And if you disagree with me, that is fine, and you can tell me that, and I won't get offended, and it is totally fine. I, I feel like, and, you know, members of the public, I'm sure will come up at the end and, and tell me. But I, I have personally tried not to listen to every member of the public who speaks, to not, you know, I know it's been said, you know, the Board is mocking members of the public. I haven't done any of that. And I've listened to other members of the Board speak and to their perspectives and taken them into account. And I've really been respectful, I, I would say. But what I really get upset with is when people throw out insinuations that I'm not just trying to do the best job I can and come to the best judgment I can. When people say, oh, it's just politics, or you're being ordered to do this by someone, or it's just your campaign contributors and you're rewarding them, or, you know, or you're biased, or you just have some dark motivation, we can't even figure out what it is, instead of coming to a considered judgment and evaluating. Now, I've really tried to respect other members of the Board on both sides of the issue, and I think that's important. And I think that's how a Board comes together. I don't think there's anything wrong with people having different viewpoints and voting, and that's, that's, that's how this works, and if we disagree, we disagree. But let's not impugn motivations and let's not throw out accusations as if, you know, that, you know, like I'm a puppet or something like that, or somebody's pulling my string. I mean, that's ridiculous, and that's insulting, and I don't think that's fair to anyone. And that's not the kind of language that has a place on a Board, where we should be addressing issues like adults and discussing the merits for and against. And if we disagree, we disagree. That is democracy in action.
I'd like to add that also, I understand your feelings, Sue, about feeling thrown, stones being thrown at you and feeling as if you've been a target lately, but two wrongs don't make a right. And saying that other members of the Board are ignoring parents and ignoring students' needs is quite offensive, and I think that's, is really something too personal to deal with.
Leslie, I'd just like to say that in all of this, there's been a lot of talk and a lot of, as Mel said earlier, stones thrown. And I just, I don't understand it. You've been on this Board now almost for seven years, so the decisions that were made up until now, you were part of. And I agree with Adam that this Board needs to come together. And in my view, if this Board wants to come together, then we follow the process as it should be. And if there are four members of the Board that are deeply concerned and don't feel that they've gotten enough information, then as a good Board working well together, you table it, and we go on, and we get educated further, and then we vote next month. I just don't understand the entire process. And all I'm questioning is the process. I am not questioning unions or the policy. I am questioning the process. And I've been saying it for two weeks, and obviously, it's not, it's not hitting home. I'm questioning the process.
We are gonna vote on this next month. This is not the final vote tonight. And as, as I said, I would ask you to please not say that we are ignoring parents and students in this community. All I'm asking is if you say it's the process, then deal with that, but do not accuse people of ignoring the needs of students in this community.
Leslie, you'll remember a few years ago, this issue came up in committee about putting a RCO in. And at the time, there were three votes for it. The votes were you, Alan, and me. So it's not that I'm against the policy. I'm against this rush to judgment without enough information. That's all.
So one of the requests that I had made was to raise the threshold, and it doesn't appear that that, so I'm, I'm going to the policy, because it looks like it's gonna steamroll. So let's talk about the, the nitty-gritty of what's in this contract. The threshold did not get raised. We talked, it was at 50, and it's still at 50.
That is correct. That was on my list.
Okay.
I needed it to be adjusted, and I had put that email out there for it to be adjusted.
So my, my question, though, is, is because I, I've done more work since the last meeting, is the, the threshold seems a little bit arbitrary. So I, I did email Mr. Yen today. I'm putting him on the spot a little bit. But we have our list of capital projects going forward, you know, our three, five, seven-year, whatever plan it is. What are the, most of the, the things that would fall under the RCO? What is the average cost? I mean, if we, if we set the threshold at half a million dollars, and I'm not saying that we do, would, would there even be any projects? If we set it at 50, would it be almost all of the projects? I'm just sort of seeing where like a threshold would be that would, the majority of the projects would fall under.
I looked at them, I looked at that today, and actually, the average is around $300,000. So, $250,000, maybe?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just, that's, that's just the number that I'm thinking of. And I know White Marsh Township, we had spoken about that, that it's a $100,000, $100,000 threshold. And thank you, Mr. Clark, for your information and speaking with the township as well. There aren't a ton of projects that go over that, but it's a good amount, and most of it is the street paving and things like that. But, you know, a lot of the significant projects do fall under that. So I just think it would be useful to up the threshold. I don't want the smaller jobs to have to go through this process if...
I, I agree with you. I think that's a very good point. I thought we decided that last time, and we wanted, we wanted to make a change.
I didn't want $100.
Yeah, it didn't, it wasn't reflected here, but absolutely should have been. Also, anything that's done in the House should be exempt from this. Is that correct? From this RCO. Anything that's done in the House?
That's correct.
It's not bid, right?
These are, these are only matters that, that go out to bid.
To bid, okay.
And just to, back to the one question, I know that Mrs. Peduzzi had brought up changing it from 50 to $100,000, but the policy, as it was voted on by the Policy Committee, was just as is. I don't believe that either I or, or Dr. Christian was given any specific direction to raise it.
Understood.
That's why it's still just at $50,000.
Okay.
But whatever the Board decides tonight will be reflected in any changes if the Board decides to move this forward.
I have a question, and I don't know the answer to. So it's, I'm being concerned, I'm confused. Let's say we need a small contractor to put the lines in the parking lot. Is he still subjected to the same regulations?
If, well, right now, your, right now, your policy is, the way it's drafted, is at $50,000. If the projection on a project is for under $50,000, and it comes in at under $50,000, the contractor is not subject to the provision.
If we set it at 100, and 101,000, then he's subjected to it. Is that right?
Correct. Correct. And as, and the information that Mrs. Peduzzi was just referencing in talking with the White Marsh engineer, they've had two projects since their RCO has been in, in place that came in under the amount. So the RCO, the policy doesn't apply when it's under the amount.
So are we on consensus for the $100,000? Is that correct?
I would like it to be higher. I, I just, with Mr. Yen saying the average was 300, we'd like to do, you know, you're still getting the majority if you're at 250, because that's, right? If that's the average, it's 300, is my math skills correct?
I think we were gonna try to align it with what White, White Marsh has. Wasn't that the goal? To survey the existing...
Well, we have much different projects.
We have, we're a very different entity than a municipality.
So I don't know what other, the thresholds were.
Hepburn-Horsham was 250,000.
Quarter million.
Okay. Because I know you did, you read through all of those.
Not specifically from school, right?
It was...
And that's why I'm asking for more time, so our experts can do their research and give us what's, what's the norm for the state of Pennsylvania? What's the norm in Montgomery County? We've been told there are three districts in Montgomery County we know about that have a RCO. That's out of 21 school districts. I mean, 18 don't. That's just in Montgomery County. So I'd like to know, from these three districts, from Dr. Christian speaking with these three districts, from, again, experts coming in, what is the norm?
We're gonna, we're gonna hear that. We've got other meetings.
Do we vote before?
We're not...
Before we have the information? We are voting. We're voting on a first read.
That is correct.
We can't wait there.
So I think, I mean, I, I think $100,000 sounds, sounds good, pending, you know, a review. If Mr. Yen can put together some information and, you know, some data about that average, you know, that, that average cost for policy, then, you know, we should discuss it at the, at the next Policy Committee meeting.
Okay, fair enough. And then the other item was Rosemary's suggestion for language on OSHA safety training. I think that, that would be a value added to this policy.
I agree.
Is there consensus?
And we did, we did forward that proposed language, as promised, when I got home that evening. We did forward that language. So if that's what the Board would like to put in there, that would be included in the, in the revised policy.
So that would address all of Mr. Hunter's, I believe the name is, concerns about safety, if they're all trained through OSHA. And that's okay.
That would be a good thing. That is correct.
And so OSHA is federal, and then we still have our state requirements.
Ken, would you mind? We can find out more information about that. I know we have an expert in the audience.
But yeah, just...
I'll ask him to, to, I'll confer with him, and we'll get an email out tomorrow.
So anybody else have more?
What I still feel that I don't have a clear understanding of is, what is the process that we actually go through with the smaller jobs?
Dr. Christian sent out that email in terms of what the current policy is. I think it's dated 1965 is our current policy. So, and then...
No, but I, I believe also what Mrs. Moore is referring to is, and I did send that email, I hope you did get it, listing the 10 enumerated requirements under the policy, which ones are state law, which ones are covered by other areas of the law. But I think what you're asking is, which ones do we already...
Exactly.
...enforce? And I, I wouldn't have that information.
That's what I'm asking, and I would like to have that information for our next policy meeting, wherever it needs to come from.
Yeah, Mr. Yen can take care of that. Mr. President, can I speak a minute?
The floor is yours.
Thank you. It's been referenced, and I appreciate the compliments of my background. Been with the district for a year. In my previous settings, lived through multiple construction projects, both renovation and new. While the word expertise has been thrown, thrown around, and I appreciate it, I don't consider myself an expert in this area, but I do consider myself somewhat knowledgeable in school construction and all of the things that are entailed with it, primarily, obviously, designing for education. And we certainly have givens that we all can agree on. Everyone in the room agrees that we want safe schools. Everyone believes that we want skilled labor doing that so that we have buildings that last to echo Mr. Shupak's comment, comments 40, 50, 60 years, right? We balance that certainly with fiscal responsibility, and we've done that in every district that I've worked, focusing primarily on safety first and quality first. When our administrative team does their goals on an annual basis, they must have a goal related to providing a safe and caring environment. Obviously, we have goals related to student achievement, but it has to be done in a safe and caring atmosphere. What I do consider my, and, and so I've said earlier tonight, what I do consider myself very knowledgeable in is policy development. Policy development is really where affects how we operate as a district and how we operate for the 5,000 kids that we're, over 5,000 children we're responsible for on a daily basis. That's probably the part of my job that keep, if it ever keeps me up at night, it's thinking about that awesome responsibility that we have as a group of 10 for those 5,000 children. When we develop policy, it should be deliberate. There was a very telling moment about 20 minutes ago where there was a 5-4 vote to table the, table the policy. I have great experience in dealing with Boards and helping build consensus. And while not every decision will be a unanimous one, and I realize that every decision should be an informed one. And in my experience, when you have a 5-4 vote to table something, that means you take a step back, you gather more information, you educate yourselves, and you move forward. Not saying this for applause, I'm saying this for, it's because of what I believe. I came to work here for you guys and for the families because of that, and I respect, you know, this Board makes the right decisions. We had to approve a budget this year in an Act One environment, approved, 9-0. When I've come to you and asked for things that we need academically and for the students of the district, all nine of you, 9-0. So that's, those are the bigger picture items that I get focused on. So I think you need to take that step back. That was obviously my recommendation in the email that I sent to the Board. But, you know, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
I, I think as a Board, I could hopefully speak on behalf of the Board that we greatly respect your opinion, Dr. Christian. I think that was evident in your review. I think everybody here truly thinks you're doing a wonderful job. I think that sentiment was expressed. I think everybody, I can't say it enough, just thinks you have been a real positive influence on our district. And so, and, and we do listen. And, and there's times we don't agree, and that's, and that's okay, you know? If we agreed on everything, that would be, one, it would be a little odd, but it, it's okay to respectfully disagree. And I think that's what we do. We respectfully disagree. We do listen. We, great advisor, you guide the Board with information. So I, I need to convey that to you, that, that we truly do appreciate all your efforts that you've done.
I appreciate it.
And, and so...
It's not about me, it's just about...
Well, no, but in, in this particular situation, I just wanted to publicly say that, you know, that, but, but there's times when we disagree, and... that, but, but there's times when we disagree and, you know, and it might be on this particular matter. You know, we, we think that it's moving through the process. I think that we have been communicating, asking for questions, asking what you need to get to your educated spot, to, to feel comfortable. Fortunately, I haven't been, been receiving the questions that, that you, you know, put it out there in emails. So, you know, and I throw questions out there and expectations that we're going to bring experts in. We're going to listen to the community. So I think we are doing that. I think we are doing our due diligence. And we're not there yet on a final vote, so we have a lot of work to do, but we can still move forward and we can still have further discussion. And when we get to that point where it, this is the one we want, that's where we'll get to it. But to stop the process right now and...
It wouldn't.
I, I personally don't think it's warranted at this point. And again, I respectfully, you know, disagree, but we have, we're Board members, we're, we're charged with, with taking a vote, and, and that's, that's where we're at tonight.
If I was on a board and I knew that four of my colleagues were uncomfortable with the process and needed more time and more information, I would respect them enough to give them that time, being that there is no actual benefit to rushing this through. So as much as some of my colleagues have said they felt disrespected by comments made, there's no more disrespect than saying, you're good, we're going to move forward. Because I've never been part of a board, of the six years I've served on a board, I have never had colleagues not care if another person on the board wasn't comfortable with the information that they, they held. Usually, board leadership, which I think we are lacking, would bring that together. And we don't have that, unfortunately. We don't have a consensus builder. We don't have someone who says, oh, we have some board members, and they're not even the rookies. We have some board members who need some more time. Let's give it to them, because that's what a good leader would do. That's what a quality president would do. And so, yeah, I'm, talk about being disrespected, that's disrespect. I need more time. There's no rush. This is ridiculous, but I'd like to stop talking about it because it doesn't matter. We're four, so let's just continue to move and talk about the substance. Can I bring up another tip, topic? As of right now, the general contractor would be under the RCO. Would I, some of the other, I don't know which one, I'll have to ask Rosemary. Hap, Horsham, the subcontractors were not included. So when we hire people to come in to put the furniture together or any of the, the smaller little things, are they going to be subject to the RCO? Because I'm wondering if we can add some wording in here that not only do we have a threshold, but there's also a restriction that maybe it's just mechanical, electrical and plumbing that would fall under the RCO. And any of the other contractors would not fall under that. Is that something that anybody else would be amenable to?
What about carpentry?
Car, sure, I mean, we can...
I'm, I'm saying, you just mentioned three, so it's not just those three, it's...
Mm-hmm. I think there may be, there may be more.
More, yes, there may be.
But we don't have enough information here to make that decision.
But I know the smaller subcontractors would, we would benefit financially tremendously if we didn't have to worry about all of the smaller subcontractors, which would be doing the smaller jobs.
I would get, ask a simple question. Bids don't go out till April, March, whenever that is?
Spring, yeah.
What's, what's the rush not to give us another month? What is the rush? Someone explain it to me.
No one will answer it.
Again, Mel, this, you keep on saying rush, rush, rush. This is the same...
This has never happened before, ever. Leadership has never done this before, Felix.
It's not the same.
Oh, I'm interrupting you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Kathy. It's not the same.
It's not.
I mean, when we want to discuss a new policy, the committee talks about it. Should we have a new policy before we write it? This policy was developed two months before any of us had any idea what was going on.
Can I make another motion to table this and see if it goes, or can I not make the same motion twice?
No.
Your first motion failed when...
I'm hoping, you know, one other person is convinced, especially our Board President, to give us what we are asking for.
Normally, you don't just bring that motion to table because...
Understood.
It would have the effect of simply bogging us down in this motion.
And it's already nine o'clock. Yes, sir.
What happens sometimes with motion fails is that one of the, the voted in opposition of the motion indicates their willingness to revise the motion.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
That will not be appropriate to happen. But if that, if you're saying...
Understood.
But if you understand it, you could just make motions and pick them all like laws.
Can I, can I just speak briefly? There, there has been more back and forth, frankly, on, on this policy and more, you know, documents and resources circulated on this policy than, than other policies that also have a huge impact. I mean, we, you know, we, we approved the search policy...
This is a brand-new policy, Mr. Shupak.
Yes, I understand that, but our search policy was, you know, thirty years old and it had been revised. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of back and forth on this. We've read the material, at least I have, and, on both sides. And, you know, I'm, I, I certainly have questions. I certainly have questions I want answers to. I'm comfortable, I'm certainly comfortable going forward, but at the next Policy Committee meeting, I'm going to have questions for the experts, and I'll want to get answers. And, you know...
That should be the first step, not approving a first read. So I don't want to sound condescending to people who are newer to the Board, but there are processes, and this is approving a first read. It actually is a big deal that we're approving it on a first read basis. That is a big deal. And I know Mrs. Feingold doesn't agree with that, but it is, because you're already another step to final approval. And policy is a big deal, as we all have, have a, a very keen awareness of how our policies need to be updated. So that is where I, I ask the newer members of the Board to have some respect for those who have served and, and our administration who has given that advice, to pause and have the committee meeting first and go through the, the, having all of the information as a group, not just reading while I'm on my computer on an iPad in isolation, but when we can actually work as a group and even have the public there, work together, work together, and then we can approve it on a first read. And then we can approve it on a second read. That's the process.
We just had a Policy Committee meeting where we discussed it.
And there were no, we never knew about it. There were no experts there. We knew nothing about it. I am a Policy Committee member, and I knew nothing about that policy until the agenda was posted online. That is not normal. That is not normal. I'm supposed to know. So this process, and as, as Mr. Ramonda was implying at the beginning, this policy did not follow the normal process of all other policies. It did not come to the Policy Committee to be discussed, to figure out if it would be on the agenda. So there's lots of things here that just really means, one of the five of you, please make a motion to table this so that we can have wonderful, open, candid discussion publicly at a committee meeting. And then we can do this again in an easier way, not here.
But that is what we're...
Didn't that drug policy come to us in writing? I never talked about that first. It came to our...
Which policy?
Those policies came through PSBA.
They're PSBA-supported. PSBA still does not have, and I've asked Dr. Christian, I don't believe he's gotten word back. Every policy, if you've noticed, I ask, and I've done it since day one, is this recommended by PSBA? You have your PSBA lanyard on. PSBA does not recommend this policy. And that's fine. We don't have to always agree with PSBA. However, there should be more due diligence when something isn't coming to us with that.
I was in the middle of asking a question, I'm sorry. Can I finish the question?
Sure.
Thank you, because you interrupted me. When these policies come to us before, whether they're PSBA or not, are they brought to us in writing, or do we just talk about it, because it's just something we just yammer about while we're there? Or do we actually have something to look at? Because I couldn't discuss an RCO unless I had something to look at. I wouldn't know what to talk about. We'd be talking about things, and it would be hard to understand unless you see it in writing. That's what that text was for when I first got, that's what I saw it as. Same way, at our policy meetings, do we not look at policies, or are they, we just talk about them there? Or do we have something to look at, at our policy, our first read, our policy meetings, I'm sorry, when the policies are brought up?
Board docs, you have them up on Board.
We do have them on Board.
Have your first reads this year? I mean, brand-new policies? Or all have been either updates or PSBA recommendations? This is the first time that this Board has had a brand-new written policy on our agenda.
I believe so.
Thank you. So we've never done this before. So it, it, it needs to be coddled a little bit, because it's a big deal.
And I, oh, go ahead.
I would point out that we've had a Policy Committee for how many months? And for how many years was there no working Policy Committee?
That's not true either, Eunice. There was a Policy Committee.
Was there a Policy Committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Last year.
Not last year.
No, not while I was on Board.
But all of the policies went through all of the other committees. Our, our previous superintendent did it a different process, but we have PSBA now and Board docs, so we're making progress.
So we have PSBA, we have Board docs, that's great. We're, that's new that we're doing. And this Board, historically, did not place policy review and development as a high priority, right? So when we came in, how many policies still dated from nineteen sixty-five, still date from nineteen sixty-five?
Completely irrelevant to the point I'm making.
Not.
It's completely irrelevant.
The point you're making is that we have an extensive history of doing this a certain way.
But we don't generally write news.
But we actually, this Board does not have an extensive history of exercising aggressive due diligence about the policies.
Totally agree. Totally agree.
I would agree, we're fast-forwarding on this, with the policy reviews, but there was, contrary to what you just said, there was a scheduled chronological review of policies by committee heads and by our Board members that went on every year.
And we had been asking for PSBA.
Mel, I'm sorry, I want to say something. Well, then, why were they so old?
Some of them...
Only thirty, forty years old if somebody was reviewing them, that doesn't make sense. It can't be possible.
Because a lot of the ones that were old, according to the way they were being looked at, if you have a policy that says, and I'm just making this up, please don't quote me, that this is the policy, but if you have a policy that says that our curriculum will follow state-mandated, you know, whatever, and that policy's from nineteen sixty-seven and it's one sentence, and a lot of these policies are one or two sentences long, then that policy doesn't go out of date. Yes, there were some that were very out of date. However, it was our previous superintendent's belief, and the Board followed her lead, that each administrative or cabinet-level liaison looked at the policies that impacted their department and brought them to committee level. Sometimes we had three or four a month. And I think, Leslie, you know that. That's the way it was done. Is, is, does Dr. Christian want to do it differently? Absolutely. Is it good that we have PSBA? That's great, and I think it's a much more efficient way of doing it. But I, as I said earlier, you know, I don't know how many times we can continue or the, what the purpose is of continually throwing stones at everything that came before this Board, before Felix and Leslie, throwing stones at everyone. I don't see that as something that is productive or has ever been done in the past. Again, we can do things differently. I just don't understand the purpose of this. And I, I second what Kathy says. It seems to me that consensus building is what a Board is about. We don't have to have nine-oh votes, but if you have Board members that are extremely uncomfortable and have problems and issues and sending us, you know, I appreciate the stuff you've sent us, Adam and Felix, but that's not answering my questions. And my questions I haven't sent because I really don't know where the line is as to deliberation. If I'm asking questions and getting them answered in an email with ten people and Mr. Clark, is that the way this is supposed to go? So I'm not sending my questions. I am waiting to ask my questions when we have people in front of me that can answer them. I don't want to read them in articles, and I've read your articles. I want to ask questions, and I think that it's only fair that the Board members that have questions and want to have them answered get that time.
I agree with you. You're going to do that at our policy, will you answer, ask your questions at our policy meeting?
Absolutely.
Great. I'm looking, actually, I'm looking forward to it myself. I want to hear the policy we need to.
Jen, if I can respond, since she asked me directly. It wasn't a high priority. It was dumb, but it was not a high priority. We were focused on other things, I guess. And this comes to my mind, when I was twenty-one years old, I was a committeeman in Philadelphia. And one, one of my tasks was to run errands for Senator Hughes-Scott. I don't know if anyone remembers that name. He was President of the Senate. And he said one day to me, he says, Mel, keep in mind, politicians' first responsibility is to get reelected. Interesting thought. It's stuck with me for sixty years. I have made it very public that I am not running for reelection next year. A couple of these people are. I believe our public has a long memory.
Just a clarification, so there was no deliberation going on during any email exchange. I just wanted to...
I said that. I said I didn't know if there was, but I wasn't comfortable asking my questions that way. That's all.
I know that you had questions, and you expressed that you needed more information. And multiple times I put out their emails and questions and a lot of exchanges going on, asking, what do you need? And...
How would you have provided them? Just, no, seriously.
So I'm asking you what you need. And, and the, not getting any kind of feedback on what you need to get to a point where you feel comfortable is, is kind of, well, it's, the responsibility is on you to become knowledgeable on this issue. And I'm willing to do any kind of information gathering that we can possibly bring up as a team, and I think that, that we're committed to that. I mean, there's been nothing else, been straight-up information flow.
And I, and I asked last week, and I'm asking again, to have real, honest-to-goodness people come before us, like we did four years ago when Mel voted for this. We had Mr. Yam bring people to the Board, to the committee level at an FMT meeting, and we asked our questions. We got answers. We directed them to go get answers that they didn't have, because I want a non-biased opinion. I don't want articles from unions that tell me about this. I want very non-biased information. And so I would like to ask questions of real, live people that can answer my questions.
And it is not your job to do the work outside of the Board. That is why we have committees. The reason we have committees, everybody, members of the public, is so you can come and be part of that conversation. Our leader is telling us to do it all via email. Nuh-uh. We do it at public meetings during...
Kathy, excuse me, I don't think that's what he said.
He is. He's asking for questions via email. How are you going to provide those answers? Would you have provided them here today? I don't believe that there is an opportunity to provide that here today. We would have to wait for a committee meeting after we've already passed this on a first read basis. So it is not our jobs to go home and read up, although we do. Our job is to do this in front of all of you, because you need to know what we're doing, and you can agree or not agree, we get the vote, but you should still get to watch what we're doing and hear what we're hearing.
Felix, I'm not even sure what the questions are. I'll be honest with you. Much less, I don't know the answers. I don't know the questions. You want to ask me a question about curriculum? I spent thirty-five years doing that. You want to ask me a question about student discipline? about student discipline? I spent thirty-five years doing that. You want to ask me a question about camping? I did fifty years doing that. I don't know about instruction.
Basketball, Mel.
Basketball, I'm the most expert. I believe in the process. I know it applies here, too.
I would like to respectfully ask once again that maybe one person has considered that this should wait until we have consensus. This is five, it was five, four to table this. That is, almost half of this group is saying, "I'm not comfortable." And I think that if you, as president, would like to build consensus and bring this board together and the community, I think this gets tabled. And I'm done talking.
Anybody going to, Kathy asked a question, or Sue asked a question? I'm sorry. All right. Anybody change your mind?
I didn't change my mind. I don't want to ask.
Is that what you want to know?
Sir.
I'm confused.
So we have a motion and a second on the first read. Is there any more discussion on the particulars of the policy?
Could we remove the graduation rate for three of five years and leave in Class A apprenticeship, if that's the wording that you would like to use, but just remove the three to five, which Rosemary had mentioned, because, and I think Mel mentioned that, that it may change a lot of votes. So I'm requesting that we remove the graduation rate, which I believe is under the Class A apprenticeship program at the top of the...
So are five people that agree with Kathy on that suggestion?
Well, can you explain what the difference would be, then?
So if you have the policy in front of you, it's under definitions. There's firm, and then there's Class A apprenticeship program. So in there it says, "An apprenticeship program that is currently registered with and approved by the U.S. Department of Labor or a state apprenticeship agency and has graduated apprentices to journey person status for three of the past five years." So it's that part right there that really restricts a lot of the competition. A lot of the smaller contractors or smaller shops can't bid because they don't have...
The way, the way it was explained to me, by a contractor, actually, was that he trains and hires people to work for him, and they work for him for thirty years. So they're not, and he's a small company, so he is not going to keep having graduates through the training program because he's a small company and because they're lifetime employees. And the way I understand it is that's the difference. The unions can pool all those numbers and therefore always have people, the right number of people graduating within the right amount of time. I could be wrong. That's the way it was explained to me. That's one of the things I want an explanation from an expert, not from me.
Did this gentleman have, or lady, have an apprentice program?
Yes.
Okay. I'll agree with Kathy. I believe if we stopped it, they must have an apprentice program, certified, registered with the state, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's satisfactory.
The, the way the policy is written, it does not require the individual contractor to be graduating people in that apprenticeship program for three of the last five years. So to the point that Mrs. Moore was making, if I have twenty guys who have worked for me for the last twenty-five years, they're all journey person status, they're not going to be going through an apprenticeship program because they're in journey person status. It's the apprenticeship program itself that you are participating in must be graduating for three of the last five years. The purpose, and having dealt with these, this policy or ordinance for...
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I think, I think, I think the concern that Mrs. Moore is raising, and if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding, is if you have a contractor, Clark Construction, and I have twenty people who work for me, and they've all worked for me for the last fifteen years, and they all have already achieved a journey person status, I'm not graduating people from that program because I have all the people I need to work for me. But that's not what the policy says. What the policy says is that if you participated in that program, if you were a participant in that program...
At any point?
And the program was one that is graduating apprentices for three of the last five years. I believe that when these policies were first written, and as we've worked on administering them over the last, I've been administering these programs for about twelve to fifteen years now, these policies and ordinances, is that you are trying to prevent a, an apprenticeship program that is an apprenticeship program in name only, and they are not really graduating people. Because as you may have gotten from some of the information that we sent to you, the state doesn't check graduation rates, and it's only when there's a complaint made or another reason that they'll actually go in and do an audit. So you could be a registered apprenticeship program, but it may not be a program that's actually active. So that's the way, that's the reason why these are written the way that they are.
So the company that I just described would qualify or would not qualify?
If they had graduated twenty people, the majority...
Fifteen years ago.
Fifteen years ago, their workforce was part of an apprenticeship program and achieved journey person status, I think they would apply. They would, they would comply, if they complied in all other...
And does everyone, union or non-union, do they all have journeyman? Or is journeyman a specific term that's only in some places?
It's, it's a term that is used in apprenticeship programs to, from somebody who has gotten the necessary amount of training, the necessary amount of field work, the necessary amount of skills, and they're no longer in apprenticeship. They've now become in journey person status.
Can a journeyman be someone who came out of a program that was not a union apprenticeship program?
Well, as I indicated last, at the policy committee meeting, the other, one of the other school districts that I represent, the general contractor who was awarded the bid got all of their certifications from, and I'm going to butcher his name, so I apologize, Mr. Papiglia's Association, Borough Construction, when they were awarded the Pensbury bid, all of the certifications that they provided were from ABC. And Mr. Papiglia, I'm sure will tell you, and again, I apologize if I'm butchering your name, Papiglia will tell you, the Irishman. I'm troubled with those Italian last names. He'll, they'll, they're not union, so.
I appreciate your input. These are some of the questions I have, and I would like to continue to have this conversation without voting on this.
All right, we're going to move forward. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the first read, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. We'll have more discussion at the policy committee. All right, Adam.
The next item on the agenda, item, item D, is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to appoint Ms. Colleen Techman, Support Staff and Benefits Manager, Colonial School District's Management Trustee on the Bucks and Montgomery County Schools Healthcare Consortium, effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2020.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. All right. Conference request.
We have a conference request to approve, make the motion to approve the request for Ainsley Devitsiak, CMS Special Education Teacher, to attend the 2018 Best Buddies Leadership Conference in Indianapolis, Indiana, from July 20th to the 23rd, 2018. And her transportation and conference registration is an award for her work in the Best Buddies program.
We have a motion? Do I have a second? We have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. International Exchange Student Application. Leslie?
This is a motion to approve the application of Maria Madalena Sempio for attendance as an international exchange student at Plymouth White Marsh High School for the 2018-2019 school year. Her application comes from AFS USA, an intercultural exchange program. That's a motion to approve her coming to our high school.
We have a motion. We have a second from Mel. Any questions?
Comes with a recommendation from the high school principal, Dr. Vicani, and the guidance department, through my office as well.
Excellent. I would just like to put in a request at some point. If, if Ms. Madalena is comfortable with it, I would love to have a, you know, to have a chance to meet her and, you know, all the board members have a chance to meet, meet her, because I think it's, it's a neat experience to have someone from a foreign country want to come and attend our, our high school.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Textbooks approval.
Textbook.
Okay, sorry, mistake. This is a motion to approve the administration's request for new textbooks for Accounting I and Accounting II at Plymouth White Marsh High School. That is a motion to purchase those two textbooks.
We have a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Ayes have it. Colonial Middle School Construction Project.
Okay, we have a motion to approve KCBA Architects to develop plans for a new colonial middle school building with the final budget and design subject to board approval.
We have a second. Got a second? Any questions?
I'm sorry. Could you say that one more time, Eunice? I wanted to, I missed a word that I wanted to hear.
Sure. So it's a motion to approve KCBA Architects to develop plans for a new colonial middle school building with the final budget and design subject to board approval.
Okay, thank you.
I just want, I mean, for the benefit of the public, and I know we're running long, and for the people at home, you know, this is obviously a big decision, decision to build a, a new middle school versus renovate the middle school, and just some background, I think would be helpful for the benefit of, of the public.
All right. Got a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Nays? Ayes have it.
Solicitors report.
You can give it. Adam, do you want to get?
I, do you want to?
Yeah.
We went ahead and voted. So, so again, we've spent considerable time reviewing options as a board for what to do to address our middle school enrollment issues, including reviewing many options for renovation of the existing school, as well as options for building a new school. We've seen proposals from multiple architects, different price points. In the end, the proposed renovation that we last looked at would be approximately $67 million and would address some of the needs, but not all of the needs that we had. And new would be a $73 million project. Some of the previous proposals we had looked at would have seen a new middle school cost about $85 million. So we're, we've done a lot of due diligence to try to address price point, also to address many of the educational and programmatic issues, and looking at other systematic issues like an access road to address some of the traffic issues that we have, to address many of the code issues that come up with renovating a school, the age of the middle school, to the extent that it would need to be to address code. And ultimately, the board agreed that the proposal for a $73 million middle school, which again, won't be the final budget because the board will have to review and set parameters for final budgets, and what it will finally include and we can afford to spend, was the best solution for our immediate needs and for a building that needs to last us another fifty years.
And I believe there will be a finance committee meeting in August that will start looking at sort of the, setting the parameters and looking at the budget and seeing, you know, what the impact would be of different, different costs. So I encourage everybody to, to attend that if you're able.
Yeah, and we... We will have an FMT committee meeting in August. I'm not sure of the date off the top of my head, but we will continue to discuss the parameters of what this run, this new build will include, as well as, you know, what we can afford to spend on it. So nothing is 100% finished in these decisions. There's lots and lots of work to be done to determine what the final project will be.
Intermediate unit?
No report tonight.
Finance?
Report tonight.
Even resource and personnel?
No report.
Central Mako Technical High School?
We did not meet this month, so no report.
Curriculum?
No report tonight.
FMT?
Very briefly, beyond the decision around the middle school, we met on July 11th, and we discussed, we got updates on the renovation project punch list at Plymouth White Marsh for the existing projects, the electrical service upgrade for PW and CES campus to make sure that we have adequate power to support all of the new features and the growth in our enrollment, and an update on the West Gym project. And Mr. Yen, I'll come back and ask you to maybe just give a two-minute update on where we are at the West Gym because massive project, progress is being made. And we also learned that we had a wonderful donation for a hardscaping terrace for the new West Gym that's going to be really fantastic from a member of the community.
Actually, we're on track for the end of July to be completed with, with the gymnasium. We took a tour of it, I guess that was last, last week. The backboards are up, basketball backboards are up, so you can go and shoot hoops. Try to get Mel in there.
The rims still have a cover on them, so I can't do it.
Cover off, Mel.
But contractors on track. We're bringing in some companies that, the wood floor, for instance, where we contracted directly from the district to the contractor. So some of the stuff will be doing on our own now, rather than having an outside contractor do that. We're on track for opening in September.
As Mr. Yen said, we all had the opportunity to tour the gym, and it is absolutely spectacular. So I congratulate you and all the contractors for being on time, on budget. Everything's wonderful.
Thank you.
CRSL, Safety Among Us?
We didn't have, we haven't had a meeting, but we will be having a meeting on August 13th at 6:00 p.m.
Legislative?
The committee did not meet this last month. One great update, though, is that Pennsylvania is going to be sending $2 million in federal aid to colleges and universities to help fund teacher and principal residency programs, which will, like medical residency programs, train the next generation of teachers and principals. And we know that we have a, a big teacher shortage coming in Pennsylvania. So that's a really fantastic development.
Municipality, community liaisons? No report. Policy?
I have the...
Oh, go ahead, Rosemary, sorry.
Concha Hakan Elementary is very pleased to be offering the free meals program for children during the summer. It's begun Monday through Thursday, and this is free for all children under the age of eighteen. There aren't qualifiers that families have to provide. Also, Concha Hakan is hosting, the borough of Concha Hakan is hosting, hosting a variety of musical performances at Sutcliffe, and now the last four will be at Marywood Park. And we have a brand-new playground at Marywood Park, and we invite everybody to come out and see it. One section for children two to five, the other section for children five to 12, and the children are out there playing first thing in the morning, and it, once it cools off in the evening, and everybody's enjoying it. And the next performance, July 26th, is going to be the Dukes of Destiny at Sutcliffe Park, which is blues and soul music.
Included in our meeting is school activity accounts and athletic activity accounts.
Excuse me. I have to do policy.
Oh, you're going to have a policy. Okay.
Policy 100 was our comprehensive planning. It's a new policy concerning district goals, educational programs, and the operation of the schools. This policy now designates the superintendent to provide written quarterly progress reports to the board. Policy 101 was the mission statement, was put on hold until the fall, when the comprehensive plan has been approved. Policy 102, academic standards, was also discussed with input from Dr. Liz McKinney, our Director of Curriculum. And policy 226, titled searches, was not revised since its inception in 1987, so there was lengthy discussion on that, and our solicitor is an integral part of the process.
All right, closing items. We have public comments.
Hi. Deanna Duranty, White Marsh Township. Several months ago, and Dave, you'll have to remind me of the date because I don't remember the date, Mr. Sherman, when I put in a Freedom of Information request for a number of emails of district personnel, and some of them struck me as odd, and so I have some questions. Felix, you had requested that all of your district emails be sent to your personal business, or to your business account, which I believe is a private company. I, for one, as a parent, am concerned about anybody forwarding their district emails to outside servers that may contain sensitive information. Now, of the hundreds of emails that I've spent the last several months going through, much information in them has been redacted. And as Mr. Sherman explained to me, when I put that request in and received the thumb drive, because there were so many emails, again, that I'm still going through, was that, that was because there was personal information on these emails, including disciplinary information about students in the district. So I have major concerns as a parent, as a community member, and also as a member of the media, that those items are leaving district servers and going out into the public. And so I don't know if there's any kind of policy on that, that you're going to be updating, since our policies are clearly so old that if we're dealing with policies from 30 to 40 years ago, perhaps that was, you know, that's obviously before email. And speaking of emails, one of the emails I did get, Felix, was from a parent asking about policy, a new policy, no guns on Colonial School District property. And you replied on January 25th, 2018, that this is a very important matter to me. I will work with the board and our superintendent to review our policies, and if need, create a policy to address this issue. I haven't heard about that. If that is so important to you, you say that right here. I would tend to think that that would be... I would tend to think that that would be one of the policies that we took ahead of an architect and a solicitor and the RCO. So that's my request for that. Now, also, you have expressed to the board in a lot of these emails that I have that you want to do business via email. We've heard tonight that you want the question sent via email, which is interesting because on November 25th, I sent an email to the current board, and I know some of them are no longer here, and I wrote from my work account as a news reporter that it's been posted on social media that the school board is shopping for a new solicitor and interviews are set for Monday before a new board is sworn in. I am requesting the firms in line for this public position and any comment the district and current board wishes to share. And so, yes, I sent that from my work email because at the time, I was seeing this on social media and felt like this could be a possible news story. I didn't know any of you from Adam. I hadn't been to a board meeting probably since I was in high school. And so I hadn't tried to reach out to you for any other comment up until that point. Dave Sherman then forwarded the email, and I believe that the superintendent said, Dave Sherman received the email below, the board should consider crafting a response. Please let me know if you would like my recommendation on this process. Mike. Then you wrote, Felix, the request for information related to a meeting that I have coordinated. My recommendation is that a response from the school district is not warranted. Please refer all inquiries to me, Felix. That presents a problem to me as a parent. You're basically saying, forget this reporter who's calling us, who's asking us for information on this secret meeting. You're basically saying, we're not going to comment. Now, again, I'm standing here as a parent, but at the time, when I started seeing these things, I was contacting you as a news reporter. I had concerns. And so, when you basically blow off a news reporter, guess what, guys? You got the parent showing up to the meetings. Because that says to me, something is wrong. That says that you're hiding something. Why would you stay? We're not going to say anything to her. You're not going to give any response at all. And as I've made point after point, when I have stood here, I have sent emails as a parent from my personal account, asking for information, and I don't get it. And that is why some of us stand here and question what is going on. And again, you won't answer questions. A former board member stood up here and said, when I was a board member, we answered questions. Well, since Mr. Clark, excuse me, Leslie, what's so funny? I don't understand. What is so funny? I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I've made it quite clear. I grew up in this district. I based my career based upon what I learned here in this district. I am proud of Colonial School District, and I don't understand, when I come here and ask questions, why you're laughing. I think that speaks volumes.
Dr. Christian, I just have a quick question for you. What's the current policy that we have on guns on Colonial School campus since it was raised? And I do think it is important.
District, I don't have the exact number for it, but it's in the 200s. All school districts have a general policy related to weapons on school grounds under the pupils section. That's the 200. You know, that particular request from the community member could have been wider than that. You know, we don't know if you're talking about having armed personnel on campus, those types of things. And so some districts may have more additional policies.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Do you want to see what the parent asked?
But is it? I'm just curious.
I saw it, I saw it months ago. I think I may have spoken to them.
The general matter of, we have a policy that you can't put any firearms onto our ...
Yeah, it's a weapons policy, yeah.
Just, sorry, it's Erin Salino. I just was notified that the feed to CITV was just cut off to everyone watching right now. So I don't know if we want to take a break and let them regroup real quick because there's a bunch of people texting me.
Oh, yes.
Does that seem reasonable? So they could get their tapes fixed? Sorry.
Mr. Bogley, take a look at that.
I just got it from my husband.
Oh, sure.
He's texting me, he has your coffee. I'm like, wait, is? And there's one type of one PSA on it. Okay. There's nothing, there's nothing being shown live right now.
It's not the official record of the meeting.
Yeah.
So it's not needed to conduct the meeting.
We're at the parent's house, how you recording going on at this meeting?
It's back on.
I'm sorry.
Is it back on?
Okay. All right. Sorry. Oh, I just got three emails, and it's back on. Okay. So my name's Erin Salino, Plymouth Township President, and as you may know, that I went to PW as well. And I actually just got some news a little while ago while sitting at this meeting, that one of my favorite teachers at Colonial Middle School passed away today. Sue Castle died. She is one of, I can't check out. She's part of the reason this district was so great. She's someone who inspired me even today. That's what you need to remember. The people who are part of this district, the hiring decisions, the things that go into what make our teachers great. And I knew she was sick. We reconnected a couple, probably six months, a year ago, via Facebook. She was a mentor to me. She helped me in high school with helping to guide me towards different activities and different things to do, even though she was my eighth-grade science teacher. And I'll be honest, I hate science, but I loved her. I actually haven't taken another science class since junior year of high school, but she was still one of those people who, she believed in you and she helped you, and she's what made Colonial fantastic, in my opinion. So, a couple things. Oh, it just got cut off again. Can I continue, or is it off?
Go for it.
Continue, take minutes.
Okay. One, I think that when you were talking earlier about the $100,000 limit, I actually think it's too low. Anyone who does construction these days knows that it's always going to cost you more than you think. And even the gentleman who was sitting next to me, who's no longer here, he thought at minimum, and he was one of the ones who spoke, and he's part of the open shop now, and he was union and all that stuff, he actually thought $250, $300. And listening to him, I kind of agree, because $100,000, how long has White Marsh had that? How long have other districts or municipalities had that? You could be totally dating yourself before you even start the policy. So honestly, take that into consideration, that you don't want to, you know, he was saying a playground could cost you $500,000. That's just a playground. So in reality, is maybe more of the research and people you should be talking to should be people who actually do this stuff now, and what real things cost for projects, like Mr. Yem probably know too. So don't just pick an arbitrary number, just to pick a number, because you might be making things so much worse for you, where people are not going to bid on a project that's so small to go through all those hoops. So that's something. A couple other things. The very first meeting that I watched in years was the December meeting. And after listening to all the conversation today, I think you guys really set the tone for how this board works and how it's perceived, and a lot of the surrounding issues, based on that very first meeting. And I don't know if you thought no one was watching, or they cared, or if it wasn't a big deal, but it is a big deal. And that's why all these people are here, and all these people are watching, and people texting me, the feeds off. It's a big deal. You need to treat people with respect. And I feel like that first opening salvo, that first meeting, you could have had a whole thing on weapons in the district, on banning all weapons, safety of the schools. That should have been the number-one topic, as opposed to an unannounced, let's announce the RFI for the new solicitor. I mean, it just set the tone for the entire school year, the school board, and that's a shame. Everyone here is talking about, you know, squabbling back and forth. And I'll be honest, as a parent who comes up here and speaks, I've been laughed at by Mrs. Feingold, and then your partner, Mr. Clark, he was here the one day, and they were laughing at me and each other while I was speaking. And while I'm comfortable speaking in public, I do it for a living, it's not a big deal to me, it's still offensive, it's disrespectful. Parents want to be treated with respect regardless of what we have to say, whether you want to hear it or not. And it's captured most of the time on CITV. Unfortunately, with CITV, it's a one-camera shot, so they could see me, but they couldn't see you. So while I'm standing here offended and upset, they can only see me, they can't see you. So that's how I feel. I don't feel that's acceptable. Also, Mrs. Epstein earlier, she presented specific facts based upon the bids submitted to the district. It's not anecdotal. It's real life, it's true facts, it's figures, it's presented to them. It was $2 million. That's a lot of freaking money.
30 seconds.
I'm a taxpayer. $2 million means a lot to me. So that's all I have to say right now. You know, just please, respect each other, respect the parents, and that's all I can say. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep my comments as short as possible. My name is Ryan Dauphinbach, member of, or live in White Marsh Township, have a son that's going to be a 12th grader and a daughter that's going to be a 9th grader here in the district. So we've covered a lot tonight. There's been a lot of things that have been covered. One of the things that was covered just a minute ago was about a gun policy, something not related to that but similar, and I think Mr. Manley brought it up earlier, was a bullying or an incident that appeared on, I saw it on YouTube, actually, and I think it's got close to over 300 views now. That's not the way that I anticipate this district working or what our meeting should look like. I know, Adam, you put out, I think, a statement this morning, I think, on Facebook about cyberbullying, and that's extremely important, and you're, everyone, of course, is against it. But I think when we see videos of what occurred in the hallway here, that's a little disheartening as well. This meeting, I thought, was awesome. There was a lot of respectful discussion and debate, and that's the way that it should be. And I think that it was terrific. On a couple other notes. Number one, I think we live in a fantastic district. I spent a lot of time this afternoon doing some research on different things. There's a website called niche.com, which you may or may not be familiar with. Dr. Christian is nodding. It's actually a database that they collect a lot of information regarding different school districts. And that information is provided by the Department of Education, includes things such as graduation rates, test scores, et cetera. Out of all the Philadelphia school districts or districts in the area, we rank, out of 126 in the area, so that includes the greater Philly area, some in New Jersey, Delaware, we rank six. There's a few schools above us, districts above us, that you hear about frequently that are a little above us, Radnor, Tridiferent Township, or Tridiferent School District. That six is pretty impressive. And I think that that is a great tribute to the administration that we have, the teachers that we have, and the parents in this district that really care, and they care about the education of their kids. I want to see that continue. And what I witnessed here tonight kind of made a mockery of the meeting, and my concern now, originally coming in, was about an RCO, and it limits competition, but I learned a lot of great things about the RCO, and maybe there's some adjustments that could be made, but it seems like there's some very, very positive aspects, and I think that's cool. So I learned a lot from the people here. But what we saw at the meeting tonight, there was a respectful request for just delaying to get a little bit more information. And what Mr. Clark was explaining about the three- or five-year thing, I still didn't get it. I think I'm a reasonably intelligent person. I think those are the types of things that need to be vetted. I think it was very reasonable to ask for a little bit of a delay, and five peoples had decided just to steamroll over that, as well as the request that was made or the recommendation that was made by our superintendent. And that leads me to what is the largest concern that I have now in this district. It's not now that we could pay a few hundred bucks more a year in taxes or some other things, but with what we're witnessing in these types of meetings, I'm concerned about our ability to retain, attract, or attract and retain talent. The talented administration team that we have, who'd want to work in this environment? Honestly, I wouldn't. The teachers, I mean, they see this? The students see this? This is, it's a mockery. It's really, really sad. And I hope that we can get it straightened out, because again, we need to maintain at least this number six. I'd rather see us up at one or two. But the way that we're going doesn't seem that we're going in that direction, and that's a big concern for me. Thank you for listening.
Chris Epstein, White Marsh Township. I have a question about the, our responsible contractors ordinance under the Contractor Responsibility Certification, which is the bottom of the first page. It says they have to fill out a form, they should complete a form provided by the district. Is there a form to review with this? I certainly would just like to see what the form looks like if you're developing a policy. So that's the first question. The second thing, at the last FMT meeting, Dr. Christian asked that, to expedite the third-party process to validate costs associated with the new middle school building, which is common practice. I wonder if we have gotten any numbers back from that yet, if anybody's requested the numbers from the third-party consulting firms. And in that meeting also, Rosemary asked if the Responsible Contractors policy would affect the costs for the middle school. So that's my second part to that. If we've requested numbers from a third-party consultant to just confirm what we're looking at budget-wise, are they going to look at an RCO in place versus an RCO not in place?
I can answer the part about validating those estimates. We did do that, and we used two different firms to do that, and we'll put up a Q and A on the website, and I can give you a call. They did, they were within one and a half points, percentage points, but they did give a margin of error, and because there's a lot of volatility in the market, we did have the caveat that, you know, steel prices are going up.
Right.
Those types of things. So they did qualify it, but based upon the design, they still were within the range that KCBA.
Okay.
Had offered.
The two different firms, you said?
Both on the, yeah, both on the renovation and the, and the new construction.
Okay. Did they also include if an RCO was in place?
We, no.
They did not provide those numbers?
That was not part of our request, that was prior to the RCO being discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
The other part.
I'm sorry, ultimately, it'll be proven, you know, the bid, when you actually get the bids, that will be the ultimate proof, right?
Right.
So, but we'll do another estimate once all the bid specs are done and documents are ready to go out, because that will be far more detailed.
Right.
Material.
Right.
Plus, it'll be closer to the time, and we'll have a better act, better lead on the economy, right?
Gotcha. Thank you. And I also want to, Eunice mentioned that she hadn't seen any data regarding increased costs and things with this RCO. My question is, have you asked for data or documentation? Because I did, it was the first thing I did, and the information I got with numbers came right from across the hall. So your own district's information. I have bid analysis forms, the one dated for the PWHS and CES Campus Electric Service Upgrade. I have, in terms of the union bid that they had, was from Carr and Duff for $821,000, and the bid actually went to BSI Electric in the amount of $498,000. So there's a big difference there. I pulled the, I got the bid analysis form for the electrical construction base bid for the renovation, and in that bid, there were no union shops that even bid on that, and the award for that was over $6 million. So I'm curious as to why no union shops bid on that. I have a bid analysis form for the plumbing for the Plymouth White Marsh High School, and to be fair, the union signatory company, JR Reynolds, actually was the lowest bid by $54,000. So, you know, it goes both ways. But I actually went and asked for this information, and I have it. Why is it that I know this, but maybe none of you have asked for it? So that's the first thing. The second thing is Sue asked about her, what, comparison with what we have, whether it's a policy or what our actual practices are, since the policies may be outdated, but our practices, there's a difference, are not outdated. So our practices, I asked about comparing what was in this document with our RCO proposal to what we currently have, and I was told by an expert from the district that all of the Contractor Responsibility Certification items, items 1 through 10, on pages 1 and 2 of the proposed policy, are met currently, they are asked for currently, so we already use those nine out of 10, except for number nine. That's the only one that is different from our common practice, current practices, and this new policy. And number nine is the Class A apprenticeship and the graduation rates. So I did ask for that, and that is the difference, but I'm just concerned that as a taxpayer and a parent, that I'm doing this research, and yet, you, as a board, some of you are asking for information and wanting this information, and wanting to delay voting so you can have all this in front of you. So this is not anecdotal information, this is real data. And with that, I am done.
Chris, who'd you get that email? Who'd you get that information from? Who'd you get that information from?
I'm sorry?
I was just curious who you got that analysis on the-
These analysis? I did through the Request for Information Act. I have, I have two forms, if you want one.
No, that's fine. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
Commission expert. I think it's worth clarifying, however, that comparing union bids to non-union bids is not the same as saying, under an RCO, our costs will go up. You can say that, yes, in these instances, bids were higher and lower, but that's not the same in looking at trends and saying, overall, in communities where there are RCOs, costs are higher or lower. And that's what I'm getting at.
Someone behind you that wants to speak too.
Okay, well, can I just respond to her comment? I have two minutes, just briefly. Have you actually done the research to see if the people that were the low bids on our projects would qualify under this current document?
BSI would qualify.
Okay. But I'm asking if you've looked at all of them.
Well, I haven't looked at those, but BSI qualifies frequently under an RCO. They're considered an open shop.
Okay.
They're not considered a union shop.
Right.
But they frequently, in several of the municipalities that I represent that have RCOs, they qualify under the RCO.
Okay. But my point is, have you done the due diligence to go back and look at these contractors who have completed our projects on time and within budget and to the standards, the high standards that we have? Have you done research into looking at those contractors and whether or not they would even be able to bid on future projects with this RCO in place? That is my question.
Eve, that question was asked last week, and I think Mr. Yem said they, with maybe one exception, they all, they all would have qualified under the RCO.
Okay. But has it been in writing? Can I request that information?
You can, you can request. If Mr. Yem has an analysis of that, you can request it. I don't know if he does, or if he just knew that off the top of his head, but, yeah.
Okay. That's fine. I definitely respect Terry's opinion. He's definitely the expert in these matters.
Hi, my name's Amy Piacatelli. I live in Plymouth Meeting. I have four kids. I have two kids that are currently here, graduated from here. My husband graduated here. My first meeting ever, maybe not, maybe in high school I was here. But I just want to say, I'm just very saddened with what I see. It's scary to see what's going on here. The lack of respect that I saw tonight had me in tears. Mrs. Feingold laughing at a parent when she was trying to address the body at present. It just makes me very saddened, scared as to what's to come. Like I said, I have four kids to go through this district, and I really, really hope that you guys can get everyone together and, you know, just, I'm speechless. I just really am speechless, and I apologize, I'm shaking, but this is just a very scary experience that I'm witnessing for my own eyes right now. So please, please have the respect of everyone on this board. You know, even the superintendent was discussing, maybe like pumping the brakes a little bit before we throw a vote. So just a concerned parent, and I know I'm one of many.
Any further public comment? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.